Good afternoon, everyone. I'm going to call the meeting of the Board of Regents of Delmar College District to order at 1:01 PM. It's Tuesday, October 13th. I'm going to call a roll to establish our quorum. Regent Adami?
I'm here.
Regent Everett?
Here.
Regent Bennett?
Here.
Regent Sherwood?
Here.
And I'm Regent Scott. We have a quorum and can conduct business. I think we've got another regent or two who are having some difficulty or delays in joining us, but they'll be here shortly. If you would all please join me in a moment of silence. And please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And please join me in reading the Delmar College Vision Statement. It's on your agenda and will be on your screen shortly. Regent Hutchison has just joined us. Welcome. Please join me.
I'm here. Apologize for the delay.
That's quite all right. "Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities. Delmar College is streaming live audio and video from the official Board of Regents on the college's website in real time, with the exception of portions of the meeting considered as closed session by statute." We did provide -- oh, actually, we're going to do something else first before public comment. The most important thing we're doing today, we're going to welcome Mr. Rudy Garza to our Board of Regents. The oath of office will be administered by Ms. Jessica Alanice, and then we'll allow Mr. Garza to say a few words. Jessica, I'm going to let you run the show for the next few minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Regent Scott. Mr. Garza, if you will raise your right hand and repeat after me.
I, Rudy Garza, Jr., okay? I'm anxious.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Regent of the Delmar College District.
Of the Office of Regent of Delmar College District.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States and of this state.
And the laws of the United States and of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Regent Garza.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Regent Garza. A round of applause, virtually. And I think each Board member will have an opportunity to visit with you at some point in the future in person and by phone, but wanted to give you the opportunity to say a few words this morning, please, for this afternoon.
Well, I just want to say thank you very much to the honor of being selected to serve on the Delmar Board of Regents. It's indeed a pleasure to serve my alma mater. I'm excited to be and to join such a distinguished team to lead Delmar College and to be able to serve the students that participate into and that attend our distinguished institution. And so I look forward to working with Dr. Eskamia and all the Board of Regents in order to be able to do the best job possible for the students of Delmar.
Thank you, and thank you for your commitment and for your service, your previous service on the City Council, and we look forward to working with you as well. So today, do not hesitate if you need questions for clarification. I know that you've already had a couple of conversations with Dr. Eskamia and have started the onboarding process, that orientation process for a new regent, but please do not hesitate to ask a question throughout the course of the day if you have anything that you're unfamiliar with or need us to go back and review. We'll be happy to do that for you.
Perfect. Thank you.
All right. We have a full complement of the Board. How exciting and thrilling to be back, a full complement of the Board. Public comments. Were there any public comments received, Dr. Eskamia?
Jessica, do we have any public comments? I didn't get any message.
Thank you.
It said no. There are none, ma'am.
We did not have anyone register for public comment today. Thank you very much. At the start of our meetings, we like to provide recognitions for outstanding faculty and students. We attempted to do some of this at our last meeting and had some AV issues, so I'm very pleased that we are, have the opportunity to bring back to you some of the recognitions and one added one. And I'm going to turn the meeting over to Dr. Eskamia for a few moments.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Jonda Halcom is going to present the actual recognitions, but I want to thank everybody for trying this again, and even then, the schedules being what they are right now, teaching schedules and so forth, we weren't able to get everyone here, but nevertheless, we do want to acknowledge those that are able to make that. These are very important recognitions to the college and to the community, and as such, Dr. Jonda Halcom will kick us off. Dr. Halcom?
Thank you, Madam Chair and esteemed Regents. I'm honored to present to faculty and to staff who have received recognition for their accomplishments. First, Dr. John Robert Heatherell, professor of biology in the college's natural science department, is a recipient of the Presidential Award in Excellence in Science, Mathematics, and Engineering mentoring. The recognition includes a $10,000 check from the National Science Foundation, a signed certificate from President Donald Trump, a trip to Washington, DC for a celebration and professional development and networking activities with other STEM mentors across the country. The award recognizes the critical role Heatherell plays as a mentor outside the traditional classroom setting in the academic and professional development of future STEM workforce. His colleague, as Dr. Heatherell would be first to acknowledge, Dr. Daisy Song, has been critical in co-leading the mentoring efforts and the program at Delmar College. Texas is only one of 13 states with recipients in this award category, and Dr. Heatherell is one of two representing Texas with the other recipient from the University of Texas, Rio Grande Valley. We want to congratulate Dr. Heatherell. Unfortunately, he is not able to be here today. I know we wanted to hear from him, but he is teaching his students right now. But I do know that he is very honored to be recognized by all of you today. The next person we want to recognize, Dr. Lucy James, and she is here today. Dr. Lucy James, professor of American Sign Language and Interpreting in the college's Communications Languages and Reading Department, is a 2020 Creighton Award recipient, which also makes her the 19th faculty member to receive this prestigious award. The highly coveted Dr. Eileen Creighton Award for Teaching Excellence represents the late educator's legacy as a master teacher and serves as a benchmark faculty must emulate to receive the honor. Dr. James Portofolio highlighted over 16 years of her dedication to teaching at Delmar College. Her devotion to guiding students is invaluable. Dr. James is the faculty coordinator of assessment, serves on several college committees, including SACS, QEP, Guided Pathways, and the Student Learning Steering Committee in the role of co-chair. Dr. James is also the current chair of the Board of Directors for the Corpus Christi Deaf. For the past 11 years, she has been a raider for the Advanced and Medical Interpreting Certification Exam for the Texas Board of Evaluation Interpreters. As I mentioned, Dr. James is here today, and we'd like to ask her to make a few comments. Dr. James?
Thank you, Dr. Halcom and Regents. I appreciate the chance to try this again. Last time, I think part of it was my own fault, but we also had help from our IT department yesterday to make sure that everything was working correctly, so I appreciate that as well. This is a great honor, and one of the most humbling things was reading the letter of nomination and the letters of support for my nomination for this award. In these times when everybody is having to figure out new ways to handle teaching responsibilities, even though I'm not currently teaching classes, I am teaching faculty and staff as we prepare for our SACS onsite visit, I realize that, yes, there were people who said I taught them a lot, but I also realized how much I have learned over the years that I have been at Delmar College. Even though I was never officially a student in any of the Delmar classes, there are people on staff and faculty who have taught me so many things, and that's what makes Delmar great, is that we do work together to serve students, faculty, staff, Regents, our community, so that all of us have the knowledge of skills we need to go on and do what needs to be done. So I appreciate the honor, and I'm very thankful, again, for the honor and for the chance to speak to you.
Thank you, Dr. James. Yes, round of applause. Is it the sign language? Yay. Dr. James, thank you so much, and again, congratulations. We're glad you could join us again today and glad to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. The next person to be recognized is Melissa Rawlins. Melissa Rawlins, Retention Case Manager with the college's Retention Services Department, is the 2019-20 recipient of the Circle of Pride Award. The award recognizes employees going above and beyond the scope of responsibilities and duties of their job. Ms. Rawlins was nominated for the support she provided to complete the faculty credentials report of this college's SACS reaffirmation process, which included the audit of over 600 faculty files. She willingly accepted the additional task and demonstrated dedication collaborating with the academic dean's on the second phase of this arduous project without interrupting her first priority and role to guide students. Ms. Rawlins has been employed by the college for over 17 years. Additionally, she is recognized for her volunteer work, supporting other institutional projects such as food drives for students, serving on various committees focusing on the mental health wellness of her students and other initiatives helping the community. And a congratulations goes to Ms. Rawlins. Unfortunately, she could not be here today. I'm sorry I wanted to hear from her, but it is a great honor to receive this council Circle of Pride Award. The next person being recognized, Maria Cruz. She's supervisor of the PBX mailroom. Maria, or Mary, was nominated and is recognized as the 2019-20 Circle of Pride Nonexempt Employee Award recipient. She previously earned the recognition award in 2011. She is recognized for her tireless commitment to Delmar College students, along with the keeping of the college running even during inclement weather. The person who nominated her commented that she epitomizes our goal to help students by guiding them step by step through the registration process, staying late in order to answer calls from students during our busiest of times, such as oath registration and tuition payment deadlines. She helps students over the phone who need assistance with food, utilities, counseling, et cetera, and directs them to the appropriate organization. She always keeps up with the student-related information in order to better serve them. She demonstrates outstanding commitment and professionalism in all that she does and is an unsung hero of Delmar College. She began working at the college in 2006 as a PBX operator, mailroom clerk, and was promoted to supervisor in 2012. Please join us in congratulating Mary on her recognition and her commitment to Delmar College. And I know she is here today. Would you like to say a couple of words?
First of all, I work with an awesome team here at Delmar, which makes my job easy on a daily basis. I am humbled, and I really appreciate your recognition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cruz. We appreciate your dedication to Delmar College, and we appreciate you being here today. We love seeing faces, and we just wish it was in person, but thank you very much for being here, and thank you again for all that you do.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, thank you for allowing us time today to recognize our faculty and staff. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Halcom. Next on our agenda is our Student Success Report. Mr. Garza, for your benefit, at our Board Retreat held this past May, the Board had as a conversation decided that we wanted to hear regular reports on our student success strategies. So over the course of the last several months, we have begun to do that, and each board meeting, we will hear a report or two relating specifically to our strategic plan and strategies and tactics that are directly in the line of student success. So with that, I'm going to ask Dr. Eskamia to tee up Dr. Silva, who is our VP of Student Services.
Thank you, Madam Chair. These two examples of student and academic success are the first of the two, as you described, Madam Chair, and we are so excited to kick it off, and it's in an area that is so important to our community. The results of having a robust and prosperous nursing program benefits everyone. You know, I've spoken to many doctors, you know, over the years, and every one of them attests to the quality of our students who graduate from the Allied Health and Nursing Programs, and it's just, it's just a wonderful opportunity. It was just a wonderful kind of coincidence that both of these occurrences happened at the same time, and we were able to kind of kick off this new initiative as part of our agenda and sharing, again, a celebratory aspect of what we do every day with regards to teaching and learning. Today, Vice President Silva is going to help us with this. So, Dr. Silva, are you there?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Eskamia. Very well said. And actually, thank you so much for letting us brag about our nursing program, and I'm going to kick it actually over to Dr. Halcom, and we actually have some nursing faculty here as well, in case there's any questions. But, Dr. Halcom, I'll turn it over to you, ma'am.
Yes, there should be a slide. Do we have a slide up that we can see for pass rates? If you go to the next slide, please. We're very proud of this. I am very proud of our nursing students, the staff and faculty. If you look at this data in the bar chart, it shows the percentage of students who are successful on the National Council License Your Examination, and that's a nationwide examination for licensing of nurses in the United States and some other countries as well. The series of bars you see on the left are the national averages, and you can see that 2019 bar, the light blue, is 2019, and then to the far right, you see 2016. And so then the next set of bars, you see the Texas average pass rates on this exam. And then over the last two set of bars, the cluster of bars, Delmar College, the RN and VN programs, and look at those numbers. It's tremendous. It shows tremendous success. You will see that our pass rates far exceed the national average and exceed the Texas pass rates as well. This is tremendous. And I want you to note one other thing. That you see for 2016, Delmar College was about, what, 86, 87%? And look at how much it increased in 2017, 18, 19. Well, I asked about that, and I was told it was attributed to a cohesive and diversified faculty and helping to prepare the students. We have a nursing success center. We have a multitude of resources. They've transitioned also to concept-based curriculum and robust clinical simulations. Anyway, you can see, this is evidence, and you can see these results published when you go to the licensure website as well, four or five years. And so this is tremendous, and I want to personally congratulate the success of our nursing students, but also the faculty and staff who have made this possible for our students. And I know we have Vangie DeLeon here and Jennifer McQuah, who have worked diligently with our students and our faculty, should you have any questions.
So great numbers. Thank you for this. Any questions, Regents? Thank you. And thank you to the faculty for being in attendance today. I know that this next agenda item is also of importance to our nursing faculty. Is Dr. Halcom going to present on that as well, or you, Dr. Eskamia?
Yes, I'll just tee her up really quickly. I know Dr. Vangie and others, Dr. McQuah, are still on line two. This other one, again, is related to the level change. This is new language for us, Regents. As you know, we put a proposal forward to advance our position as a Level One institution as per SACS COC, to advance to what's called a Level Two and offer a four-year degree in a Bachelor of Science of Nursing. And as such, there were multiple stages that needed to take place in terms of preparation and approvals. Of course, preparation began years and years ago when faculty, current faculty, began attaining higher levels of educational experience and so forth, and I think there was a group of, oh, I think a cohort of four to five or six or so, that went off and earned their doctorates in the hopes of one day being able to teach this. Well, they did so out of, you know, just for the sake of lifelong learning and improving their lives and those of their families, knowing that the law did not offer that. Well, a couple of legislative sessions ago, I think it was, yeah, it was the 85th legislative session, opened up the opportunity and allowed Texas community colleges to offer four-year degrees in certain areas upon proof and evidence that it could be sustained. Well, we, as Delmar College, were ready and had been doing all the right things. Faculty and staff had been preparing for years prior. Mitt legislation hit, allowing this. We applied, like many other colleges, and we're highly encouraged to apply from leadership around the state and other entities, and so we did. We've gone through multiple approvals, and just the other day, I received a phone call myself from our vice president, Dr. Michael Hofer. He's the gentleman who is helping us with all things accreditation with our 10-year reaffirmation process, and told me, he said, "Congratulations to the college for receiving this final approval from Southern Association of Colleges and Schools Commission on Colleges." And so that being said, Dr. Jonda, please take it from there.
Actually, I was hoping that Vangie and Jennifer McQuah could address the bachelor's degree that has been developed. They've worked so diligently on getting approval for a Bachelor of Nursing program. Vangie, would you like to address this?
Hi. Good afternoon, everyone. And I, again, I think, as Dr. Eskamia mentioned, that we certainly, having a bachelor's degree program for our students to follow through, has been a vision of ours for years. Many a times, myself, Dr. McQuah, would sit and try to, you know, plan it out and see how it might, you know, work. And so we were just really eager to get this going once we got the green light from the coordinating board. But I will give a lot of thanks to our faculty, our program director. I think they too had a vision, and so we're just really excited to get going on bringing in our first cohort. We hope, we're planning on opening our application process as early as February of 2021, and that admission period will probably run through the month of May, and so we will make our final selection in early summer so that our first cohort will begin the fall of 2021. So that is just right around the corner, so, but we're very happy to be at this point. And then again, we will also follow with the process of the accreditation of the actual program, so we will be applying for candidacy in the next couple of weeks. We'll be submitting that application. We're moving forward, and again, our faculty as well are very, very excited to get going in this process. I think, Dr. McQuah, would you like to add any other comments?
Thank you, Vangie, and hello. Good afternoon, everybody. Yeah, just very excited to have finally received the last step of approval, and we're excited to get this admission process underway. This will be a three-semester, full-time program, so the students will start next fall, and they will graduate then in summer, the following summer. So very exciting times. You know, just recently, we had our admissions for our ADN program, and we had, I think, the second, or maybe it was the largest applicant pool. We had over 200 and, I think, 10 applicants for the ADN program, so I think that sort of illustrates, you know, the demand and the desire to attend this college. And, you know, I think our first cohort of RN to BSN, we're slated to admit 30, but I can probably promise that the applicant will be much larger than just 30. So, you know, moving forward in the years to come, I see very good things, a very large RN to BSN program track for the college. So it's very exciting.
Thank you, Jennifer and Vangie. This is exciting. This is a big achievement on the part of Delmar College and our nursing department, our faculty and staff. Thank you for taking time today to let us talk about this.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all for being here today. This is indeed great news, and we congratulate you on the success. This is a lot of hard work that went into getting to this point. We acknowledge that, and we are very excited for you all to be at this point and for us to be able to offer this to our current students as well as our recent graduates to come back in and finish a bachelor's program in nursing. That's exciting news.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank the Regents for your all's support in moving this ahead. We couldn't have done it without you all. This is going to be one of the best values of education anywhere in the state. When you talk about affordability and then the power of a BSN and all that it gives, our students, you know, we can now, we can now find prospects from, you know, starting in the Certified Nursing Assistant Program, that non-credit credential, all the way through the pipeline of LVN or ADN or RN with the associate degree, and now BSN. It's an incredible, incredible asset to the, to the, to the community, and the testament of who's already applying and hearing about this is, again, is an incredibly powerful degree and option for our community. We should all be very proud. Thank you, Regents, for all your support.
Thank you. Yes, there was another round of applause there. All right. We will move on with our college president's report, beginning with a college update related to the COVID-19 pandemic.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to go ahead and read my comments. I've edited them enough that I need to stay on script this time. "Delmar College continues to operate under Phase II of our Return to Campus Plan. Designated areas are open on a restricted basis for instruction and testing, and most employees are working, continue to work remotely. Health and safety protocols remain in place, including social distancing and wearing facial coverings, hand washing, and the like. We'll maintain these protocols for as long as is needed to mitigate the spread of COVID-19. As we proceed through the fall semester, the flu season has begun, so we're watching both flu and the COVID-19 situations with an abundance of caution. We remain in close touch with our health leadership, both at the local, state, and federal levels. With regard to instruction and enrollment, we continue to move ahead with approximately 60% of instruction being delivered online and approximately 40%, obviously, if you do the math, face to face, with the latter primarily on West Campus, although we do have a..." have a good number of students on East. Going into the middle of the fall semester, with many K-12 students gradually returning to their campuses, we expect that more of our students who are parents will also return to class. We've taken extraordinary steps to provide alternative, shorter semester options to our students, such as eight-week sessions and other alternate, alternative sessions, such as 14 and 15 weeks, and you'll hear a report here shortly. These courses are yielding excellent results, all things considered. And again, a report, an enrollment report that'll be done by Lenora Keys and Rita Silva will expand upon this in just a few minutes. The remainder of the fall will look, likely look like the first part, with the same proportion of online and face-to-face instruction. However, due to the uncertainty of COVID-19, I've asked the administration to prepare multiple contingency plans for three possible scenarios: status quo, reduce face-to-face instruction, and expansion of face-to-face, the latter to occur somewhere around spring break. So ladies and gentlemen, again, I've been telling everybody at the college, there's really three things that can happen. It can stay the same, it can get worse, or it can get better. In any case, things are evolving, and we are moving, we continue to move on a, on a day-to-day basis and react on a day-to-day basis. But rest assured, Regents, that we're looking ahead and we're beginning to prepare and plan for the future. Things are changing around us. FEMA dollars are being stopped as of September 15th and so forth. So planning, planning, planning is the key to getting through the circumstances which we're under. The bottom line is, we're preparing for all-case scenarios. Finally, fall commencement, as we did with the spring and summer commencement ceremonies, will be, will be held virtually once again. The ceremony will be broadcast via the college's social media channels at 7:00 PM Friday, December 11th. Lastly, I continue to work with the Texas Association of Community Colleges in preparation for the 87th Texas Legislature that will start in earnest in January. Technology will play a big part in the legislative session, as we're told and as you might expect. It will look largely like a virtual meeting we've become accustomed to, and I plan to be fully involved to provide information and advocacy for our college and for the other 49 colleges of the state. We have a full legislative agenda that is developing, and I look forward to discussing with this, discussing the particulars of this agenda with you all as board members. That concludes my report for COVID update and campus operations. I have two other pieces to discuss, Regents. That is, well, do you have any questions about what I said? Let me stop there.
Just going to look and see if there are any questions from Regents about his COVID-19 update. I don't see any. You can continue. Thank you, Dr. Eskamia.
Okay. Regents, and next, we have printed the 19 and 2019-20 statistical profile. There's, like with all documents, as soon as you print it, it's outdated, and that's the way it works. We do have an electronic version. We are working, we will have to give specific access to that electronic version because of ADA compliance and so forth. You can only put it out when it is compliant, and that is a technology piece that is still missing and eludes us. But nevertheless, it is out and is available. We will have them mailed to your respective addresses that you've submitted for that type of correspondence. And finally, as part of my responsibility, and as was submitted in your packet, I have here the Title IX reporting to you all for Texas, as it relates to the Texas Education Code. And I got to read this first paragraph to you, and it's submitted, again, in your packet. It's entitled Chief Executive Officer Report. It's from me to the Delmar Board of Regents under the Texas Education Code, Section 51.253, Section C. The institution's chief executive officer is required to submit a data report at least once during each fall or spring semester to the institution's governing body and post on the institution's internet website a report concerning the reports received by employees under the Texas Education Code, Section 51.252, the type of incident described in the employees' reports that constitutes sexual harassment, sexual assault, dating violence, or stalking as defined in the Texas Education Code, Section 51.251, and any other disciplinary actions taken under Texas Education Code, Section 51.255. Again, it was submitted for your review. There are data associated with this on the second part of the attachment, and Ms. McDonald is here to assist me in answering any questions that you may have. And that is my official submission for your consideration as per Texas law.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding this Title IX report? I see none.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much, Dr. Eskamia. We now have an opportunity for Regent Reports. There were a few of us that attended the Virtual Leadership Congress of the Association of Community College Trustees that was held last week, October 5th through the 8th. So wanted to have an opportunity for those Regents who attended to provide a little bit of feedback about the event and sessions that they attended. Ms. Everett, would you care to go first?
Yes, thank you very much. I did attend several of the sessions as I was able to, and it's not quite as, as much fun or as informative as when we get to do this in person, but I do appreciate them making the effort to, to still have some sort of gathering and passing along of the information. And it is nice that we can basically have access to all of the sessions as opposed to, you know, just those that we were able to sign up for in person in the past. And I won't go over all of them, obviously, but I did attend a couple regarding board responsibilities, the role of the board, as I continue to wrap my head around that. And one session in particular that I know Dr. Villarreal is going to share with you all some slides from this session once they're made available. It was called Trustee Transitions, and the facilitators of that were from a community college outside of Chicago. What struck me about this session that I really appreciated was this board of trustees had decided to impose upon themselves some formal standards of practice. This is, these are above and beyond the code of ethics that they have, but they're guiding principles around how they function, how they treat each other, how they may represent items to the public. And it just struck me that some of what were on those standards, and they had quite a few of them, more than a dozen, might hit at some of the things we've talked about in the past when we've brought up our code of ethics and some additional principles that we may want to look at. So they have to do with, you know, mutual, mutual respect, no personal agendas. The chair of that board talked about how we all may be professions in our own right, but we leave that at the door when we come into the trustee meeting, and that we're there as a team and not for our own individual agendas. So I thought that that was helpful, and I hope you will take some time to review at least that part of the presentation when it is shared with you, and perhaps it's something that we can discuss further in the future as we start to review some of those policies. And I'll leave it at that and leave some time for other folks.
Thank you, Regent Everett. Dr. Adami, were you able to attend some of the sessions? Nope? Okay. I was able to attend several sessions, and like Regent Everett, I'm going to key in on two of my favorites. One, of course, was the one that Ms. Lenora Keys and I presented on industry partnerships, and have to thank Dr. Villarreal for her assistance in putting that together. We were on the last day of the, of the Congress, but still had, I think, quite a few folks that attended and some good questions that came out of it. But we were able to talk about what the board's role looks like in, in industry and industry partnerships. So I appreciate that opportunity to present. But the session that I wanted to share with you that I attended was one that was put on by MZ, which is an economic modeling statistical company, and we actually use some of their services at Delmar College to provide economic information. And it was presented by Brian Baylor, excuse me, Brian Bailey, who is their manager of higher education. And he talked about the survey work that they've been doing since the COVID-19 crisis has started, and how they are working with colleges to look at non-degree and skills training options to focus it on skills that local companies and businesses and industry within your region are advertising for. So how do you actually work with your current students and prospective students to complete their skills training to get the jobs that are available in your region? So it's a very detailed skills-matching work that goes directly to training and hiring. So I'm going to share, as Ms. Everett, not all the slides are available yet. They'll be, I think, available next week. And when I get the full set of slides, I'd like to share it with you. But I really appreciated the, the information about what MZ is doing and providing these personalized learning recommendations and skills-based recommendations for, for folks. So that was one of the highlighted sessions from my perspective. The other thing that I wanted to share with you all from a, from a governance standpoint and from just news out of ACCT, Texas was well-represented at, at the ACCT Virtual Annual Congress. Our own Lydia Santabagnas, who is a longtime Regent at Temple College, was awarded the Trustee Leadership Award for the nation. She was the, one of the regional winners, obviously, and then was awarded the National Trustee Leadership Award. Ms. Santabagnas is a, as I said, a longtime trustee at Temple College and is a past president of the Community College Association of Texas Trustees and one of the founding members of CAT. We also have Ms. Rose Benavides, who is a trustee at South Texas College. She is the new vice chair, has moved from Secretary Treasurer into the vice chair role on the leadership board for ACCT. Mr. Dan Memes from San Jacinto College is the Western Region Chairman on the board, and then Alton Smith with Lone Star College is also on the board. So we have three very strong leaders from Texas who are involved at the national level on that ACCT board. So I wanted to report that to you. Any questions from anyone about the ACCT Leadership Congress? Next year is in San Diego, and they are counting on it being in person. So if you're excited about going to the West Coast, then, then put the dates on your calendar for next October, and, and let's hope that the world cooperates and we can all join together for that annual congress. As Libby said, I applaud the staff for the work that they did to create this virtual annual congress and to create the content for it, but there is nothing like live presenters and the opportunity for live Q and A and the networking that goes on in those kinds of events. So maybe next year. With that, we'll move on to our staff reports. The first one is going to be our student enrollment report. We do this once in the fall and again in the spring to look at our enrollment numbers each semester, so I'm going to let Dr. Eskamia introduce that report.
I think you said it best, Regent Scott. This is our annual reporting, and what's different from last year, this year, is that we're in a base year. What's different from last year and this year? Well, everything else because of COVID and the circumstances surrounding that. And all I want to say is, my hat's off to, when you see what's going on here as it rolls out, as it rolls out in this report, there is a tremendous amount of effort going in to react and to be reactive and proactive in terms of getting our students registered for this most difficult of circumstances. That being said, Dr. Silva and Ms. Keys, go ahead and take it away.
Thank you, Dr. Eskamia, very much. Dr. Silva and I'll be presenting today. And next slide, please. The overview of enrollment relates to Goal One of the strategic plan, which is completion. Create a coherent and seamless pathways that guide students to achieve their educational goals. We will discuss the 2020 to 2021 State of Texas Base Year and the impact on the funding for the next two years, and show the various indicators in enrollment for all of instruction, including credit, continuing education, and corporate services. The impact of the COVID-19 pandemic on students and enrollment is evident. However, the college's strategies to address the challenges and implement flexible terms will also be included. Next slide, please. The legislature sets the overall state funding every even-numbered year for the following two years on a biennium basis. This is referred to as the base year. The college began this base year as of summer one semester, and it will run through the beginning of the spring 2021 semester. Based upon the contact hours earned by each student in each course, our funding will be determined for the next two years, beginning in the fall of 2021, and carries through the fall of 2022. As you see at the bottom of this slide, we also have the 16-week, 15-week, eight-week rapid track in May semester, semesters, which are very flexible, and you'll hear about this throughout this entire presentation as to how we're being flexible in meeting the needs of our students. Next slide, please. This calendar shows, shows how the state defines the base year. Even though it begins, quote, and I'm going to say in quote, "summer one," the contact hours are actually counted for any course that begins after the 16-week spring term. So if you see in this calendar where spring flex entry, that's really beginning in February, as shown in that calendar as it moves forward throughout the year. These are referred to as flex terms, and they are very flexible, and they run for 15, 14, and eight-week times, and will impact our fall enrollment numbers that you will see in coming slides from Dr. Silva. Additionally, the college credit courses run on a semester format, that's shown in the blue line, whereas continuing education courses are on the quarter system, as shown in the, in the green line. And next slide, please. In this pie chart, we are focusing on the state appropriations portions for the college's funding. Calculated on the base year of 2018, in the budget for this academic year, there's 15.3% of our total budget, which is that blue section of the pie chart, which was funded by state reimbursement of contact hours generated by instruction. And that's received each year and has been received for each year and including this year, this academic year. That piece of the pie chart is what we're working on right now for the next two years. Next slide, please. This shows the overall impact of state funding based on contact hours generated by all of instruction. The combination of credit courses and continuing education provided over $16.4 million for this biennium, or for each of the two academic years. As you can see, we're showing the base year of 2014, 2016, 2018, and 2020, and that's where we are today. However, I'd like to show that how the combination of the different elements form the different funding streams for our base year. Next slide, please. I realize this is a busy chart, however, it is comparing Delmar College with our large college group, and they are defined there on the chart, too, and the state overall for the base year. From 2016 to 17 base year, in the column there on the left, the college was up 6.5%, whereas the large college group as a comparator was down 4.2%. So that would have been coming into our funding for these two years. As a significant indicator, I would like to point out that the college's continuing edu- education contact hours of 412,707, they're under the 2020 to 2021 column under Delmar College, is 25% of the contact hours generated by all the large college group together, of the $1.6 million under Large College Group. As you know, we have put significant effort into our continuing education programs, and this is a great contribution to our total contact hours. And now, Dr. Silva will discuss the next slides.
Thank you, Ms. Keys. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board of Regents. Next slide, please. Another revenue source is success points. Delmar College has seen a three-year average increase of 4.2% in success points, which matches a statewide average. In the last biennium, Delmar College received over $1.6 million for its success points. Next slide. This graph is a review on how colleges receive success points. Texas Community College received points after a student reaches certain milestones, such as completing developmental work or completing 15 and 30 credential credit hours and receiving a credential. Next slide, please. Now, spring credit headcount. Delmar College has had a steady increase in student credit headcount for the last five spring semesters. Headcounts from spring 2019 to spring 2020 include a 1.6% increase. Please note our flex number of 761 indicated in that blue box on the spring 2020 chart. This number is going to drastically increase next year due to the college's response to the COVID pandemic. As of the September 29th, CBM preliminary report, that flex number for spring 2021 is going to be 3,048. I'm going to discuss more of that in a little bit here. Next slide. Regents, this semester has been a difference. The next three slides will help tell the story of this registration period. After seeing a decline in the first 16-week courses, the college strategically pivoted to flex classes by increasing the number of courses offered. This strategy resulted in the increase of 3,048 headcounts with an unduplicated count of 667. As noted at the bottom of this slide, the unduplicated numbers resulted in a total headcount for fall 2020 of 11,246 individual students. Although the first 16-week and summer flex resulted in a 11% decline, the college is rebounding with the current numbers of flex classes, and we continue registering until the first day of second eight weeks, which is going to be October 19. This next slide is going to give us a proper visual comparative. Next slide, please. This chart is a good representation of the student enrollment pattern during this pandemic. It shows regular fall enrollment, summer flex, and fall flex, which were 15, 14, or second-eight-week terms, as discussed by Ms. Keys earlier. It best illustrates the college's response to the COVID crisis. Students were hesitant to register at the beginning of the semester, as Dr. Eskamia mentioned in his presidential report. Delmar College tripled the amount of courses offered in the second-eight-week courses. This strategy has resulted in over a 300% increase in flex headcount from fall 2019 flex to the fall 2020 flex. And just as a note, we are still enrolling. Next slide.
Rita, hold on. Before you go on to the next slide, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Regents, we have to accentuate what's going on here. We've got to talk about this. So last fall, those two columns on the left, as you're seeing, is what happened and is what we were, which would be a very robust enrollment, 12,251 total. And we had that second-eight weeks offering. We started ramping up, and I think we had about 50 or so sections offered in the second-eight weeks. We knew coming into the fall semester, and I said it over and over and over, and I even said it here in board meetings, we cannot go in with a conventional schedule and a conventional mindset. We must have 16-week. I think we had 14 and 15-week options. We didn't have that. We had 15. And then certainly a huge abundance of second-eight-week offerings. So when we opened up the fall semester, went into the registration, and we're closing out the official day of record for the official fall headcount, you know, I frankly was just sitting there scratching my head saying, 10,800, where are they? Well, I know where they are. It's like what's happening in my house. There's a spouse that's at home that's trying to take care of their kids and make sure their kids are being tended to and taught and everything else. And we know what these families are struggling with because we asked them, and we've been talking to the students. And so when we opened up, I think when we opened up the flex entry, the 14-week, the 15-week, and over 200 sections, if I'm not mistaken, 200 sections of second-eight weeks, more than we've ever offered. And then we found that 3,048 people enrolled in those 14-week, 15-week, and second-eight-week sessions, sections. Okay? And some of those are from the 10,000. So they're taking, from that 10,800. In fact, the majority of them are. And but out of that, almost 700, about a little under 700, because they're still enrolling, 700 new students came into the fall semester. 700, on top of that 10,000. Yeah, well, 700 new students that came into the mid-part of the semester. And that was all due to the flexibility and the innovation and the creativity and the good old-fashioned hard work of staff and faculty and everyone else who cared so much to put these sections out. It's an incredible testament. This is a big deal. This is a rebounding from that very sluggish, slow beginning of fall enrollment. And so I don't want to just move too quickly through this. You can tell from the tone of my voice how just relieved I am. And I'm most relieved for those students who are aching to take these classes. And I am so relieved that it's just turning out this way. And I'll tell you, not all colleges around the state are reacting this well. And remember, at the end of, we still have, you know, we're still enrolling for the second-eight weeks of fall right now? I know I'm stealing some thunder, guys, just bear with me here, but I have to. I've been waiting all month for this one. I know we're still enrolling for the second-eight weeks of fall, but we also are just, we haven't even started enrolling for the regular spring either. Remember, all of those fall into our base year for consideration as well. I'm going to say, I'm going to dare say, most importantly, we are serving families in the most difficult of circumstances, in the most creative ways and effective ways. And I can't tell you how proud I am of the faculty, staff, and proud I am for those students to stick with it during these most uncertain times and continue with their education. Thank you, Rita, and thank you, Lenora. I just had to add that.
Thank you, Dr. Eskamia. Obviously, that's very well said, and I could... If there's any other questions, I'll continue to the next slide. Thank you. During base year, contact hours are very important. The fall 2020 shows a 12% decrease in contact hours from 2019 and a 9.5% decrease in fall 2018. However, the good news is that there's an additional 259,040 flex contact hours generated for this fall 2020 flex numbers that we're talking about. That is a 374% increase from fall 2019 and a 654% increase of fall 2018. Important to note that these contact hours will be reported to the coordinating board that's going to show up in the spring 21 numbers, but they will be counted during this base year. Next slide, please. Regents, this table shows the enrollment percentages of our cohort colleges across the state. As you can see, the pandemic has been a challenge for our sister colleges as well. It's important to note here that the flex numbers that we kind of keep on talking about are not indicated and are not shown in this table. Next slide, please. We already discussed our contact hours for the last three fall semesters. This chart is to give you historical perspectives. As you can see by the bar graph on the far right, we already have a jump start in our spring 2021 with these 259,040 contact hours from the fall flex that will be counted in spring 21. Just want to note here, as Dr. Eskamia just mentioned, we haven't started our spring registration yet. We'll begin registration for the spring on November the 2nd. Traditionally, we have reported on two special cohorts during this enrollment presentation. That is our Viking Islander Program, also known as VIP, with Texas A&amp;M University Corpus Christi, and our dual-credit program. Next slide, please. Regents, this fall, we have 125 students co-enrolled in our VIP program. The staff at both institutions have worked very closely during these challenging times to enroll these students and provide them with all the support services they need. As a side note, the president at A&amp;M University Kingsville has requested a meeting with Delmar College to discuss collaborations with their institution. Next slide, please. The dual-credit program continues to grow. As this slide shows, there's been a five-year increase of 35.5% and a 9% increase from last year. We currently have 35 high schools participating in dual-credit. I want to take this time to thank the Office of Early College Programs. It is due to their great relationships that they have built with the local ISDs that they continue to grow, even in the challenging times. Now, Ms. Keys will discuss continuing education and corporate services.
Next slide, please. Thank you, Dr. Silva. The college's continuing education and corporate services program delivers a variety of instruction to key community partners and individuals. Their instruction brings in revenues from a variety of sources, including contracts for a fee, individual enrollment, and grants. Depending upon how the courses or classes are offered, state reimbursement is provided on the quarter system. The following slides will show examples and the sources of revenues of instruction. Next slide, please. The contact hours for continuing education is shown in the top section of each of the academic years. This trend varies on the quarter system with the first quarter beginning in September, after the credit semester has begun and is continuing through November. The academic year for continuing education contact hours enrollment update will be given more in the spring enrollment update. As you see, we flow into the spring as far as counting numbers from previous slides shown by Dr. Silva. However, we can report that for the first quarter for continuing education, we have over 2,417 enrollments and generated over 158,940 contact hours. And all this will continue and flow over into the spring semester, too. So as you see, as we're building for that spring semester, all the work for this fall is going to count towards that base year.
Lenora?
Next one. Yes, sir.
I'd like to restate a point that you made earlier. Regents, we've made great efforts in increasing that part of the curriculum, the continuing education portion, and it is growing tremendously. I think the upshot, there's two numbers that stand out in my mind. Last year, total base year, about 10% of our enrollment, excuse me, 10% of our contact hours were continuing education contact hours. That's a huge number. The other huge number, and other colleges, or many colleges, most colleges don't do what we do. They do not put the emphasis like we do. Our economy requires it, and so we've responded. The other piece is that when you brought in the group, Lenora, of the other comparative group of our peer large colleges, how many were in that group? Was it eight or so?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, eight. Out of that eight, we had 25% of the contact hours in CE out of that total bunch. Okay? Just to give you scale, okay, and the importance of it. There's a lot of other things tied to data, and we'll talk more in coming meetings about this. But the continuing education aspect of our curriculum continues to grow in importance and capacity and everything else, because the students more and more are consuming these courses in preparation for their careers, livelihoods, and their education. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eskamia. All right, and next slide, please. What I'd like to help show during the next few slides is the uniqueness of continuing education and how it's difficult just to put in a column all the contact hours plus all the revenues that are developed, because they come to us from such a variety of sources and revenue streams. In the adult education programs under continuing education, you'll see a variety of services delivered. First of all is industrial technology, and these programs parallel with our credit programs. And then you have HSE, our graduation ceremonies for our adult basic education, or better known as GED by some. And we've got two grants in that area. The Certified Nurse Aid Program is just one great example of how we've been reaching out with your area ISDs. And this program leads directly into our associate and nursing degree. Next slide, please. Accelerated Pathways is made possible with these two grants awarded by the Texas Workforce Commission. In these programs, students have been identified as needing basic skills or being basic skill deficient, or what we would call getting a GED. Students graduate with an occupational skills training certificate or award and are better prepared for employment and/or further post-secondary enrollment. Examples of these programs include Level One Wire Welding and Certified Nurses Aid, both targeted in-demand occupations for the coastal bend area. Next slide, please. The largest growing program in continuing education has been the Certified Nurse Aid Program at 19 school districts and over 29 area high schools for this fall. And I just keep wanting to repeat that, in 29 area high schools this fall. This is resulting in 468 enrollments, generating almost 27,000 of those contact hours. And so in the continuing education area, these are students who are in high school in all these different areas, as you can see, which reach out into many rural areas. And so the reach out in the programs for continuing education meets a variety of needs and is truly flexible. Next slide, please. The Rebuild Texas Carpenter Program came from a grant awarded at over $1.2 million to the Continuing Education Program and the Delmar College Foundation. This 10-week carpentry program was due to the disastrous impact of Hurricane Harvey to the surrounding towns and lack of skilled workforce within those areas. This program was so successful that additional funds were awarded and the timeline extended, and programs are still going on right now. I think many of you saw the photos with Senator Cornyn and Land Commissioner Bush here on site. Both of them enjoyed hammering and working with the students. Thank you. Next slide, please. Now, I'd like to share some data on corporate services and workforce development. Corporate Services works with regional, industrial, and community partners to deliver customized training for in-demand job occupations. The combination of contract training generated over $1.2 million, as you see in the amount line across this slide. Texas Workforce Commission grants and apprenticeships at over $1 million. In transportation training, or CDL, as we quite often call it, over $830,000, which came to a total of almost $3.1 million in revenues for the year 2019-20. Contracts with companies such as Gulf Coast Growth Ventures, or known as ExxonMobil and SABIC, that was their joint venture, Corpus Christi Polymers, Kristus Bond Health Systems, or just to name a few. However, this is still looking at... However, this is still looking at different types of instruction and how we're flexible to meet the needs of our community. Next slide, please. This shows the breakdown by the three areas of contract training, Texas Workforce Commission grants and apprenticeships and transportation training over a five-year period. This trend is expanding and sustaining long-term revenues to the college. Delmar College has served as the local education agency for seven apprenticeships training programs in South Texas, serving 947 apprentices in masonry, electrical, insulation, plumbing, and HVAC, from Corpus Christi to McAllen to Laredo and to San Antonio. I think this gives a great example of the far reach and the dedication of the employees in this area to provide instruction. And sometimes this generates contact hours, and sometimes it doesn't, but it does generate revenues. Next slide, please. This is a summary of the last five years for corporate services. In summary, corporate services and workforce development has served business and industry and generated over $14 million in contracts, Texas Workforce Commission grants, and apprenticeships. Customized training has provided emergency response training, trades commissioning of electrical mechanical instrumentation, and Lean Six Sigma to customize customers across our region. This includes Gulf Coast Growth Ventures, Versta Pena, and Navy Army Credit Union, just to name a few. All this instruction comes together to add over $14 million in total revenue to the college. These relationships have generated almost $11 million in donations of equipment and industrial technology to the college. So it's through these types of relationships that we build our programs. We work with credit programs, we work with continuing education. All of this builds into the revenues and the total reach out for the college within the community and the region. I hope you can see how instruction at Delmar College is very flexible in meeting the demands and needs of our community, and especially during the COVID-19 pandemic. If there are any questions at this time, Dr. Silva and I'd be glad to answer them. Next slide, please.
There's a question, please. Regent Bennett?
Yes, we budgeted for a zero increase in tuition. And there are a lot of numbers there. It looked like it went down, the student count went down. But it also looked like the dual credit went up. So dual credits are paying $99 a course. I'm wondering what the impact is on the budget in the net decline in student enrollment.
Well, dual credit, and I'll let Dr. Silva refer back to one of his slides on the credit side because dual credit courses also receive state reimbursement through the contact hours reimbursement. And I believe that was shown in our dual credit report last time. We need to get you that specific data. We didn't break out the revenue per dual credit.
The other thing, too, Mr. Bennett, is we're still enrolling for the fall semester. And so it's that second eight weeks that'll be, it's an unusual scenario. Again, this is very unique in that all those fall semester students moved over to the second half of fall. They're going to be counted into spring. And so, and we're still generating revenue based on those 3,000 enrollments. So headcount, headcount is relatively down still, but we're not done enrolling yet for fall or spring. The story still remains to be seen at this point. I'll have to get that question answered and to get an assessment from the business office based on the numbers we have right now. I don't know, Mr. Garcia, are you on? And can you handle that right now? Or do we need to come back with an answer for Mr. Bennett?
Mr. President, I think we need some time to collect the data, analyze it, and summarize it for the board. So I will need some time to do that.
Yeah, in this case, timing is going to be everything. We're still, we're still in the process. And we know that we're, we're still slightly down from where we budgeted. But at the same time, you know, we're watching the dynamics of our students and returning. You know, just this past week, many, many students started returning, K through 12 students started returning back to school. November 3rd is going to be another pivot point for our local school districts as well. And so those kinds of dynamics are encouraging their parents and our students to come back to school. And then with the recession, the economic recession we're under, we're thinking that's going to catalyze those kinds of things. All that to say, Mr. Bennett, we'll have that analysis. We still see the glass more than half-full on this one, and we're going to continue as such. And at the end of the day, we'll calculate things, and we'll see where we come up short and the like. The other part, too, just as a reminder, and Regent Garza, we'll sit down and talk about these mechanisms and how we basically are in competition with the other 49 colleges. And at the end of the day, what the legislature will do, will line us up on some three very specific aspects of our enrollment and line us up against the other, excuse me, the other 49 colleges and see where all they lay are kind of ended up at the end of their base year as well. But to your point, straight on tuition and that revenue, I think we're still down, but again, we're still enrolling and rebounding nicely. So we'll see, and I'll get you that number just as soon as we can. The timing was, you know, every year we do this in October, and then we have this anomaly of this COVID environment. So we're going to have to have subsequent conversations in coming months, coming board meetings to answer your question, Regent Bennett.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Other questions?
I've got.
Mr. Regent? Okay, Regent Garza?
Appreciate your presentation, I really do. And I'm certainly a big fan of workforce development and all the training that we're giving outside of the academic side of it. But I was trying to kind of match up, we're trying to figure out, and I'm not sure I'm reading it right. On the last slide, the corporate services workforce development, five years, I guess the total is 14 million. Is the last total didn't have a dollar sign on it? So is that a dollar amount?
On the, yes, sir. I'm sorry, that is dollars. Those are dollars, $14 million, 14.468,344. And thank you, and you've always been a great supporter of our workforce development. I'm just going to take a sidebar and say welcome to the board, and thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Lenora. I've always appreciated the data and the information you've given us in order to make decisions. And I know this is a five-year dollar amount, but I was trying to kind of equate it or match it back to the pie chart that we had at the beginning or several slides in the beginning on budget revenue for 2019 and 2020 and 2020 and 2021. Where would these dollars be in terms of this year with state appropriations? We don't have a sliver there. I know we've got miscellaneous, but we don't have a sliver for, say for instance, corporate services or what people pay us on a contract basis or what money we get from type A board. Where would that, where would these dollar amounts be in terms of the pie chart?
That's a great question because they keep referring to the funding of the college as a three-legged stool, and I always like to say, no, it's a four-legged stool because we do have grants and contracts, and I'm glad you brought it out. Right now, it's under miscellaneous, and that's auxiliary and other funds come in. But these funds really do add up and contribute a lot to the bottom line. Some of the donations that you're talking about come through the foundation, though, and they're not on this pie chart.
Okay, all right, that explains a little bit. Thank you very much, Lenora. I'll be asking some of these questions, and please have patience with me because I'm just trying to understand it all, okay?
Anytime, Mr. Garza, and I'll be glad to meet with you and go through all this. Anytime you've got any questions.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Sure.
Ms. Keys, I just wanted to add, I appreciate Regent Bennett's question. I have the same question and look forward to the budget update as those enrollments continue to come in. And at the same time, Dr. Escamilla and your team, I think it's pretty clear that had we not been so flexible and creative in creating those flex entries, that our numbers would be far worse. And I gathered, Dr. Escamilla, from your comments, that other colleges were not as quick to react and come up with some alternatives. So thank you all for moving quickly, for coming up with some alternatives that would work for our students during a very, very difficult time in our community. So I appreciate those comments.
Thank you, Regent Avery. I just have to say in response, you know, the strategy of the eight-week sessions is something that we continue to develop in earnest. This wasn't, this was a response, a response to a crisis. And you know, you learn things both pro and con, you know, how to do things and how not to do things during a crisis. And what this has taught us is the utility of that eight-weeks format for both students and employees in terms of flexibility and so on. So there's going to be a lot of lessons learned as we move ahead based on these enrollments. The other thing we're doing is we're surveying as many, I'm asking Dr. Rito to survey every one of those students in those eight-weeks courses and find out what those experiences were like and so forth. We also need to survey our faculty as well because there's too much rich data in there in this pool of enrollments. But thanks for the comments.
I have a follow-up question related to the peers and the headcounts. I think it was slide 35 or page 35 of the packet. So specifically, we are about in the middle of the pack with our peer group of large colleges. Some have lost, or Central Texas has lost as much as 20% of their enrollment. We're in the middle of the pack, but we've got a couple that are in single-digit loss, in terms of loss of enrollment. So there was a comment made about our students and the number that might still have children at home and that impact. So two questions related to the peer group. Do we understand the difference between their response?
Thirty-five.
Yeah, I think it's page 35 of the packet, the large colleges enrollment headcounts. Well, I'm sorry, it was page 35 of 289, so I don't know what page it's on. It's up in, it's.
It's up in the credit section, right after the fall credit contact hours.
There we go, right there.
Yeah.
There we go.
Go back.
So I have two questions related to this slide. One is, do we know what Tyler and South Plains and Blinn are doing differently or what is different about their student body? And number two, have we, we've got some anecdotal information about why some of our students did not enroll early in the fall, but what is our methodology to actually get some real data points and some objective data around who our students are and why they did not enroll earlier?
So if I can answer the last question first, and I think this is just my assessment at this point. The way we answer those questions is to go back through our peer professional groups and send out requests. Everybody's going to want to know what each other is doing, whether it's the Chief Student Affairs Group, Chief Financial Officers Groups, and certainly CEO Groups to find out. But quickly, anytime I look at a grouping of colleges like we see there, you see very easily there that there's, there are different dynamics going on at most of these. And I'm just going to have to put it out there. It's the biggest difference is residential versus commuter colleges. That's the easiest, that's the most obvious of these groups here. Most of those groups there, let me see, I don't think. I think every one of those groups is heavily into athletics. In fact, I know they are because I used to work at one of them and neighbors and competed with the others that are there. So largely athletics, lots of residential types of opportunities, and that brings different challenges there, you know? In some ways, I was, you know, thinking, gosh, what if we had residence halls and/or family? What about those challenges? You know, it would have presented a whole different ball of wax.
So are these more traditional students primarily?
Yes.
As opposed to our 24 to 26-year-old average student?
Their profile of their students are younger, especially based around the percentages of their schools that are residential and tied into all the extracurricular activities, but especially the residential part.
Okay.
Yeah, younger also.
And then secondarily, are there some, is there data or strategies in addition to the eight-week flex courses? Just like we've done the nudge campaigns and some other things with Civitas, is there a way to communicate directly to identify the students who haven't come back? And what nudge, what offerings, what assistance, support do they need to potentially come back?
So Dr. Silva, that's right up your alley. Tell the Regents about what's going on with our advisors and coaches and so forth. These are academic coaches, by the way.
We have, we're surveying, working with the College Relations Office, we're surveying students, our current students, and also students who attended in the spring and did not attend in this fall. So that is a way of trying to figure out what was, what was the impeding factor of them not attending this semester. So we're trying to learn as well. Like Dr. Escamilla said, lots of associations getting together. Actually, the Student Affairs is getting together this Friday to talk about the same thing. So we're all trying to learn from this pandemic as well. And then we do have several outreach using Civitas and using certified faculty members who have reached out to students who did not enroll this semester, too. As a matter of fact, part of the survey that we sent out from College Relations, the last question is, do you want somebody from Delmar College to reach out to you and talk to you about registering for Exumist? And that survey is actually just concluded last week. We'll get that report out, and we'll follow up with the students who answered that survey.
Again, lots of efforts, lots of efforts going back to reach out to every one of those students. We know who they are. We know those that didn't persist for different reasons. And then we also have to, we cannot ignore the fact that over 20,000 individuals in our area have been directly affected by the COVID virus. In other words, they were infected. And so when you think about 20,000 households, okay? When you think about that, we can break down the data as it relates to those 20,000 households. I can, what we believe, based on what we found, is that there is a significant number of Delmar College students and some employees, but we're talking about students here right now, that have been directly, or at least indirectly impacted by that virus. When you think about that, you add all those factors in, it's another unfortunate piece of the puzzle.
Anecdotally, I had heard from one of my colleagues at one of those peer colleges in our large group that there is, that they're identifying students who, because of the nature of community colleges, they need face-to-face instruction, and they're just not going to come back until we are in a face-to-face environment again because they feel like they're not doing well in a hybrid or in an online environment.
The difficulties that come with, if you've worked online, you've found how all-consuming it is when you fill your day with meetings. It's the same for our students who are taking these courses. And when you think about the nature of our students and the percentages of our students that need pre-work or remedial work and those kinds of things, the idea of taking a preparatory type of course online, when you were talking, when you were thinking you were going to go and you needed to be engaged, it makes it more difficult. So there is that pool out there.
Thank you. Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes, I would like to second the idea that I'd like more information on the differentiation between Delmar and St. Lynn College and why the difference. I understand residential, and you mentioned sports. I would actually think they might have been hit harder. I understand why their enrollment's greater for those reasons, but I'm not sure why their drop is less. So that's just, that's sort of, not based on any consideration, but it would really be good to know what's the difference. And it could be that traditional student. traditional student.
And, and Regent Hutchinson, that was just a, I mean, that was a question asked, and I was looking at the chart and giving a basic analysis based on what I know. Um, I, it was a, it was speculation, but based in, in experience as well. So I will, I will find out. We will, we will be having meetings and, and we'll unpack that. Absolutely.
Great. Yeah. Worth digging deeper. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Well, once again, meeting students where they are and, and providing support and, and options and innovative, uh, back to our, our vision statement, providing innovative solutions for our students. So, uh, as Regent, uh, Everett said earlier, I applaud the, the flexibility and the work that you all have done. And, um, it's, it's a challenging year for, in a number of ways for all of us. Any other questions or comments on the enrollment report? Thank you, Reg. Just thank you, Dr. Silva and Ms. Keys for, uh, for that information. Our next staff report is write-offs on accounts receivable. Mr. Garcia? Mr. Garcia?
Yes, afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board. According to what the colleges write-off and defaults board policy, B4.20, delinquent accounts are written off after the colleges has made multiple collection attempts. The accounts receivable that have been delinquent for three years are valued at $215,887. These accounts have undergone various collection efforts, including student billing, sending collection letters, phone calls, and placing student account holes. Following the write-off of these delinquent accounts, the student account hole will remain in place so that students do not have access to their academic records unless the balance is settled. I will also want to point out that the colleges' collection efforts have improved, resulting in a reduced write-off this year of delinquent accounts valued at $215,887 relative to last year's, uh, $232,231. This year's delinquent accounts includes balances from students who qualify for financial aid with a total value of $164,000 or $75,000, I'm sorry, 75.9% of these delinquent accounts, which makes it even more difficult to collect from a student who started the college with financial needs. If there are no other questions, Madam Chair, Mr. President, and members of the board, this concludes my report.
Any questions regarding, there's no action item here, but any questions regarding this report? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Uh, you'll see on our, uh, pending business list, the, the number of things, uh, that are coming up in subsequent months. Hearing a number of reports today, and we're going to be, get it, getting some updates on the, um, potential, the feasibility of residential housing in November and distance learning, along with Clary Data Legislative Update and, uh, the Coordinating Board's 60 by 30 Strategic Plan, uh, interim status of the Grant Management Audit, and a SACS and QEP update. And then in December, uh, Strategic Enrollment and Marketing Plan, um, Foundation Update, Contract Review, and Discussion of Our Tuition Policy. Again, at this point in time, we are not anticipating a January Board Meeting. Um, and then the Board would, um, meet again in February.
One item, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So what's not reflected here is another, uh, result of, uh, COVID-19. Um, the federal, um, government has allowed us to, uh, move, uh, the Clary Data Reporting to December.
Gotcha.
And we are taking them up on that.
Okay. So Ms. Pettis will move that, uh, from November to December on the pending list. And our pending list goes all the way through September of next year. Uh, but if, is there any questions about items coming before the Board from our pending list? All right. Uh, we'll move on to our Consent Agenda items. We have approval of minutes from our August 25th meeting and acceptance of the Investment Report from, uh, September of 2020. Uh, do those items need to be removed or considered separately? Seeing not, uh, is there a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented? That Dr. Nikodami makes the motion to approve.
Second.
Second by Dr. Sherwood. Uh, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any oppose, raise your hand. That motion passes. Thank you. Uh, now on to our regular agenda item. We will have the, uh, Quarterly Investment Report, followed by our Quarterly Financial Report. Mr. Garcia?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you very much. Um, federal agencies in the state of Texas continue to respond to the COVID-19 and economic downturn by assessing and adjusting fiscal policy, monetary policy, and pathways based on the best available information. These decisions have a direct impact on the colleges' investments, uh, investment yields. Today we have Linda Patterson and David Malkoway from Patterson and Associates, who will be discussing trending financial and geopolitical activities that are influencing the colleges' investments, uh, investment yields.
Good afternoon. This is Linda Patterson. Um, as has been said so many times before, it's a shame that we can't be with the Board right now, but I'm sure that this too will come around. If we can go to the next slide, I'll bring you, um, a little update about, um, what the background is. I'm going to run you through just some very quick points of what's been happening economically, which have affected the, uh, colleges' portfolio. And then my associate, David, will walk you through what has happened on the portfolio. So as you can see on this first slide, and I don't think I have to tell any of you what the major, um, the, the major factors affecting the market right now are, and it is definitely COVID, uh, and the fact that it has slowed down or stopped most of the economy. Um, and another section that's going, another factor that's considerable right now is the upcoming election. So the market is, is basically staying in limbo. It's back and forth a little bit, but all the markets are waiting to see what happens after November or at the beginning of November. Uh, we've had the Federal Reserve mating during the last, the last quarter, and they have not unexpectedly signaled that they will hold those rates steady. So we may be looking at a 0% earnings rate on overnight or very liquid funds until, um, they said through '23. Uh, that doesn't mean that the rest of the curve can't move up a little, and it doesn't mean that they're stuck there, but it does mean that, that every intention is there. And that's because, uh, the Fed and the Treasury Department are seeing a lot of good strength in the economy. There is good growth there, but, um, there's more to be done. And as we reopen the economies, they're going to need these low rates in order to make funds available to everybody. But, um, they are optimistic, as are we. Uh, we think that there's a lot, um, going on in the economy. All, uh, you can see it in that lower right-hand graph, I think, pretty dramatically. These are the claims on, for jobless unemployment claims. And you can see that they've spiked up, uh, at the beginning of the, of COVID, but the, especially the continuing claims are much, much lower now. The Fed is going to be continuing their liquidity programs, their lending programs. Um, they are making funds available and liquidity available to governments, to, um, to small companies, to, to large companies. Uh, but they are pushing as, um, as we all know politically, uh, it's very difficult right now. But on the next slide, um, you can see that the pace of recovery is going to be very much constrained, um, by the stimulus package. On that next slide, if somebody can change it for me, um, the longer we go without the stimulus, uh, and the deeper the contraction, uh, it makes the recovery a lot slower. And it could be that we're looking at another year or two of very slow growth in the economy. Um, but we do have those strengths, those strong sectors that I mentioned, and that is housing, manufacturing. We even saw a little tiny pickup in inflation, but we have to keep that inflation going, and we have to get the stimulus package through Congress in order to get funds back out into the economy. Um, you, it's interesting to look at that bottom slide on the right-hand side. Um, those are the, that's just an indication of which industries have been hit the hardest. And, uh, government is very high up there. Um, I think education probably throw, falls into that other category. Um, so obviously has been impacted by COVID, um, but not to the extent of some of the others that, um, especially in the corpus area, you know, very personally, the leisure and hospitality has been significantly slowed by it. Um, it's going to depend a lot on when the vaccine comes out. Um, but one thing that we have seen, um, is that the, the, these low rates have bond issuers, including schools, universities, cities and counties and so forth, running into the market and using the low rates to issue debt. Um, and this year, they have sold a, a, an amazing $92 billion worth of debt, um, in taxable debt. And that's the most since 2010. So there's a, a lot going out there. As soon as, as those bond projects and the proceeds come in, of course, those will be spent, um, and give us, um, a little bit more impetus in the economy. Overall, on the next slide, you can see the impact of all of this. The fact that the Fed is, uh, has keeping the, the curve down there. We're basically looking under, and this is, although that little circle moved on me there, um, the red line is the September rates, and you can see that you can go as far as the two-year before you can get above a .1 interest rate on treasuries and agencies. So this is dramatically influencing the portfolio. Um, that's why a lot of the portfolio, besides the, the development that's going on at the college, um, that's another reason why so many, so much of the funds are liquid, uh, because there's, there's no opportunity out there. And, um, I can assure you, we search and search and, uh, have worked with staff and tried, and I think you'll see on the next few slides, to keep the portfolio higher, um, than this 0%. But it's going to be a while before we see some, probably through the election and maybe some positive tests on vaccine, before we see that short end of the curve move up. Now I'm going to turn it over to David Malkoway, who will walk you through what has been going on and how this has affected the portfolio, uh, for the college. David?
Thank you, Linda. Thank, thank you, everyone, for having us. Um, if we can move on to the next slide, uh, this is a snapshot of, uh, all the, all the funds there at the college, how they're segregated. Your local maintenance fund or kind of your general fund represents about a quarter of the portfolio. Um, you'll see the new bond, uh, funds show up kind of on that top-left quarter. And, uh, you know, that's about 37% of the portfolio is your 2020 bond funds, Series A and B. And then the older bond funds, uh, the Series 18 bonds are representing about 30% of the portfolio, with the plant funds and some of the, uh, the, the other reserve funds representing the remaining balance. If we go to the next slide? Uh, here is your pooled fund overview. Again, this is a kind of a snapshot of the local maintenance funds excluding your construction and bond funds. Uh, you can see that in August of last year, on the very top-right bar, uh, that pool had about $71.6 million. Uh, we finished August of this year with about, uh, almost 81 million there. Um, the biggest difference in the portfolio, obviously, is, is the yields. Um, the one-year treasury bill is at a .12%, a two-year treasury yield is a .14, and a three-year treasury yield right now is a whopping .17. So I think everybody understands the, kind of the, the frustrating yield environment, but we have been able to navigate and kind of cherry-pick some opportunities. We're seeing a lot of opportunities in municipal bond issuance right now. Um, I think it's, uh, obviously going to continue to be a little bit of a sweet spot, as tax collections may be slower than they have been historically due to the COVID virus. But, um, there will be some opportunities as, as a lot of issuances come into market, where we're going to be able to out, you know, out-yield agencies, which typically we've leaned on to out-yield treasuries. And now also in that far-right column, that kind of on the lower portion of that, the screen, those last couple of boxes, you compare that yield in August of 19, the portfolio yield was a 2.39, whereas the six-month T-bill was yielding a 2.06. And obviously, we had a spread of about 33 basis points. Right now, on a relative basis, um, we finished up the quarter with a very wide spread over the six-month T-bill, uh, which averaged a .15 for that, this quarter. And you see that the portfolio yield equated to a point 80%. Uh, WHAM was a little bit less on pooled funds than it was a year ago. So we've kind of shortened up on the pooled funds and kind of lengthened the duration on some of the construction funds, uh, where we have a little flexibility. If you'll go to the next screen. Uh, this is, again, kind of breaking down how the portfolio is allocated, uh, in that, again, local maintenance or your general funds. Uh, when you compare, uh, the previous quarter, that left pie chart, to the current quarter on the right, um, you'll see that, you know, we've got about, just under 30% of the portfolio was in commercial paper, which is very short-duration assets. Um, on average, you know, we, we maintain a WHAM there of about 90 days. There was about 40% of those funds in liquid overnight pools. And, uh, we had about 20% in municipal bonds and a little bit more in the, in the bank sweep. But you can see, again, the yields by sectors, you can see that they've come down naturally in response to what treasury rates have done. But we're still maintaining, um, you know, a, a, a very good measurable spread over the alternatives. You see the pool funds, which are, again, your liquid, um, money market instrument, being a .31 in August, down from a .81 the previous quarter. But you can see how the commercial paper and the municipal bonds, again, gave us a, a nice spread over the overnight liquid pools. And go to the next slide, please. And again, this is taking a look at what remains in those 2018 tax bond funds collectively in that far-right column from August of last year. Uh, you'll notice that we've spent down roughly $45 million. The balance then was a little over $121 million. As, uh, we ended up at the end of this August, uh, just at $76.8 million. And again, you'll notice that we lengthened the WHAM out there to about a year from, you know, just under a half a year. What we've been trying to take advantage of is locking in some municipal bond yields, um, and, and trying to lock our yields as opposed to, you know, riding the pool rates down continuously. The, um, average yield on these funds ended up being a .84 for this past quarter. Um, obviously, again, if you want to correlate the spreads on the portfolio relative to the, the six-month treasury bill, again, a year ago, we were out-yielding the T-bill by 40 basis points. That, uh, far-right column near the bottom, the 246 versus a 206 for the T-bill. And currently, on the far-left column, um, you've got a .84 average yield on the 2018 bond funds versus a .15 average yield for the six-month T-bill. So again, on a relative, on a relative basis, we're kind of, um, more than outperforming, um, the treasury bill. In the next slide, please. Um, again, this is taking a look at the brand-new funds that just came in from the 2020 bond issuance. Um, those currently have a market value of, uh, Those currently have a market value of a little over $90 million. And you can see the average yield has, all that money's been going to work at the current prevailing low-rate environment, didn't have the benefit of, you know, the other portfolios having locked in yields for the prior, you know, six, 12, and 18 months out. So we are still picking up, on the average yield, we're getting a .38% versus the six-month T-bill at a .15%. And, you know, if you looked into the granular, granular details of the actual holdings in the portfolio, your logic investment pool, which is, again, kind of your money market instrument, it finished up at the end of August with a yield of around a .31. And I just want to point out that that yield today is currently a .20, and it will continue to trend down closer to where those treasury bill rates are. So if you go to the next screen. Again, this is, it's combining the, both of the, all the bonds and construction funds together. You'll see that we, again, we've got this pretty well diversified, left around 23% in commercial paper, around 24% is in the liquid pool, municipal bonds constituted 7.5%, and agency notes constituted just under 40%. As we move forward, you're going to see a larger slice of the pie is going to become that municipal bond, because that's where we're finding the best spread opportunities relative to the other, you know, choices available under the Public Funds Investment Act. And if you want to go down to the next slide. That pretty much wraps it up, but I, I did, again, on a granular level, if you're looking at the specific holdings of the portfolio in its totality, Kathy and I have worked diligently to make sure that we are very barbell on the short end of the curve, and, you know, then we're taking advantage of some, some yields out there between 18 months and three years typically, and locking those to get a good combined average yield. And you'll notate that if you're looking at those details, we've got at least 10 million to 25 million that'll be rolling off, you know, for the next six consecutive months. And that'll be the game plan going forward, to make sure that we have a constant, you know, short-term carousel of funds that are maturing on a monthly basis, and just complementing that where appropriate, when we see the right yields to try to lock in and, and combine our average yields. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Regents, any questions for Mr. Garcia or for the Patterson and Associates group? This does require an action to accept the college's quarterly investment report for the period ending August 30th. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Everett. Is there a second? Second from Mr. Bennett. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of accepting the quarterly investment report, please raise your hand. Let's see, do we have everybody on screen? Yep. All right. All those opposed, raise your hand. Thank you. That motion is adopted. Thank you, Ms. Patterson, for, for being with us today. We appreciate it and the information very much.
Okay. Thank y'all.
And Mr. Garcia is going to present to us the college's quarterly financial report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If we can pull up the presentation, please. If we can pull up the financial statements, please.
They're working. Mr. Salinas, do I see that you have joined us?
In the meantime, Mr. Garcia, I also want to welcome you to the team.
There we go. The agenda item is here.
Wonderful. Thank you. Okay. So, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board, we ended up the fiscal year financially sound with the uncertainty on the longevity of the COVID-19 crisis and the economic downturn. As a brief recap to the fiscal year 2020, the college shifted gears in response to the COVID-19 crisis and the economic downturn midway through the 2020 fiscal year. Thereafter, the college's financial stability plan was redesigned to include reduced spending, a risk fund reserve, funding for mission, mission-critical costs, and revision to the cash reserve policy B4.1.1 relating to risk fund reserve. As planned in our August board meeting, the fiscal year 2020 financial surplus of 9.1 million is available for the risk reserve fund. This risk fund reserve will add resilience to the college's operations throughout the current crisis, allowing the college to continue to fund mission-critical operating activities. There are many components to this, to this year's surplus, so let's pivot to the college's operating financial statements, beginning with revenues. Next slide, please. Thank you. So the college ended the year with a slight uptick in total revenues, adding about 807,000 to the surplus stemming from interest income and state appropriations. Next is expenses. The college is planned to reduce spending in response to the crisis added about 8.3 million to the surplus comprised of 5.00 million from operating expenses and 2.6 million from contingencies. These financial data points I just went over contributed to the college's surplus of 9.1 million. There are no questions on these financial statements. We will pivot onto the balance sheet. No questions? Very nice. Okay. Good. Balance sheet now. The college ended the fiscal year with an operating cash and investment position of 54.2 million. With this level of liquidity, the college is well-positioned to meet its current obligations, valued at 23.1 million. This includes accounts payable, sick leave and vacation payable, deferred tuition, and the annual estimated pension and OPIP obligations. Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board, if there are no questions, this concludes my presentation.
Excuse me. Any questions for Mr. Garcia? If not, we do require an action to accept the college's quarterly financial report. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Dr. Sherwood, you second?
Second. Okay. Somebody got there.
Motion and second to adopt the quarterly financial report. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Mr. Salinas, if you're online, can you devote affirmative or nay? Thank you very much. Okay. That motion is adopted. Next item is the discussion action around our internal audit follow-up report on the 2020 annual learner, excuse me, annual internal audit. There we go. Ms. Tammy McDonald.
Just thank you, Chair. This afternoon, we'll have representatives with Weaver. We will have Dan Graves and Brandon Tanis will be presenting one follow-up internal audit report over the admissions and registrar's area. And then they will also present the FY20 Annual Internal Audit Report, which, for board review and acceptance, which we're required to submit, and Weaver does that on our behalf, to submit to the State Auditor's Office Department by the end of this month. So I'm going to go ahead, and with that, turn it over to Dan and Brandon.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Regents, for having us here today. As Tammy said, we've got a couple quick reports to provide you. One is, as she said, the follow-up report on admissions and registrar. If you recall from our last presentation, that one was the final one that we needed to finalize the report on and coordinate with the, the new interim chief academic officer. And so we have done that, and I'm going to let Brandon cover that report, since he did a lot of the work in that follow-up.
Great. Thank you, Dan. Next slide, please. So, Regents, today we're presenting to you the results of the 2020 follow-up internal audit of admissions and registrar. This is the final follow-up that we have performed for the 2020 audit plan year. This one, this follow-up was initiated in April, mid-April timeframe, where we were looking at the remediation efforts from the remaining open findings from the 2016 internal audit report over admissions and registrar. So to give some background, when we did that initial audit, we had 25 different findings. And throughout our follow-up procedures over the years, management has diligently worked on, on remediating those. And there was two partially remediated findings that, that we were evaluating as part of this follow-up. And of course, through, through the completion of our procedures, which included definitely interviews and walkthroughs with, with personnel, and also with the chief, new chief academic officer, and working on feasible recommendations and learning of new initiatives that are occurring, we're able to close that out here in August and report that to you. So of course, for our scope, we did look at those two partially remediated findings. Next slide, please. And when we looked at those, there was really, there was two partially remediated findings that both had to do with advisor training. So finding five and finding six that we evaluated included an initial kind of advisor training, so the standardization of training provided to, to all advisors, whether that's their, their full-time position as an advisor for the college, or they were faculty that were also advisors. And then also advisor continuing education. So this is kind of annual refresher training on standards and requirements, changes to statutes and so forth. So through the course of this follow-up, we evaluated the different training modes and, and methods that are being done at the college. Definitely, when we started our initial audit of this in 2016, there was no really established and formal procedures on training. And from then, management definitely has worked diligently, and we worked with the director of advising initiatives, where there was new training that has been developed. And from then, that included a five-week advisor certification course, periodic advising refreshers, and also Nakata webinars. And since those have been implemented, our goal of this follow-up was to evaluate really the status on who all has attended those trainings and where the, the college was. And so definitely, we looked at a list of all the advisors at the college, including those faculty that also have advising roles, and did data analysis to see how many have taken those trainings and so forth. So definitely, a lot of progress has been made. We identified that those, that are reconsidered to be full-time or dedicated advisors to the college had 100%, you know, compliance in, in those, those policies and getting that training completed. And over 55% of advisors college-wide, both full-time and part-time, such as faculty advisors, participated in at least one training event. And so we have these here as partially remediated, as working towards having compliance college-wide, specifically on those that would be considered faculty-type advisors, to make sure that there is, you know, a continuing education component, so that they're aware of any changes that need to be taken into consideration for advising. Management has definitely provided their management response and, and has chosen advising as its QEP in preparation of the upcoming SAC reaccreditation process. And so part of that will be looking at rolling out those initiatives to, to ensure that faculty have attended at least one of those trainings a year, to stay up to date on any kind of new issues or areas that need to be considered for those advising. So definitely, there's been a lot of progress since we initially started this audit, and once we had, looking probably this time next year, when they look to have that fully rolled out and have all, at least faculty attending it, that are advisors in some capacity to attend at least one training. We'll open up for any questions.
I don't see any. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. Since there's no questions, you'll move to the next slide, please, and I'll present to you the annual internal audit report. As Tammy said, this annual internal audit report is a prescribed report from the State Auditor's Office in compliance with the Texas Internal Audit Act. And it is intended to be submitted to the SAO and posted on the college's website by November 1st, 2020. That this report, you received in draft format. The reason this report is in draft format is it does need to be accepted by the governing board prior to issuance. And so with that, if you will take out, you should have a copy of that report. I'll walk you through just the sections quickly and have any, you know, be able to respond to any questions that you have. The first section is a statement of compliance with the terms of the Texas Government Code 2102.015 that talks about the establishment and posting of the report. It also provides an overview of the 2020 fiscal internal audit plan in Section 2. And then in Section 3, it is a disclosure of any consulting and non-audit services completed for the fiscal year 2020. Weaver did not perform any of the consulting services. However, we did disclose some consulting services related to information security by the Columbia Advising Group. I believe you've all received those reports in prior meetings. Those reports were issued in May 2020. Section 4 is a statement on the quality assurance review of the auditor. And so as your auditor, we've provided a copy of our peer review letter. We are peer-reviewed once every three years in accordance with AICPA standards, and we've provided a copy of that, which we have the highest rating that's available under that audit system. And that is included, a copy of that letter is included in this report as well. Section 5 of the report is the internal audit plan for fiscal year 2021. This report, or this audit plan was the audit plan that you approved at our last presentation for this year, and you'll, you'll see where we're focusing on grants, the current internal audit advising policy project that we met on during our workshop this morning, and completing all the follow-ups of any open IT findings, sorry, not IT findings, any internal audit findings, which includes the admissions registrar, IT, HR, purchasing, grants management, and student services. The next section of the report, Section 6, is the external audit services procured by the colleges and performed for the college. We've provided that disclosure. And then the last is the fraud, waste, and abuse reporting section that also includes the disclosure of where the fraud, waste, and abuse link is on your website. And so those are the prescribed areas required by the State Auditor's Office in the report for your review. With that, I can open up for any questions on the annual internal audit report. If there are none, that concludes our, our presentation of both of these reports to you today. Thank you for having us, and I do believe we'll turn it back over to the Chair for board actions.
Thank you. So we do need an action to accept the internal audit follow-up report, and combined with that, the acceptance of the 2020 annual internal audit report. So is there a motion to approve both of those documents?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Everett. Any questions related to that motion? If not, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Thank you. And any opposed, say yea or nay. Mr. Salinas, can you say yea or nay?
Yea.
Thank you. That motion is adopted. Thank you very much. We appreciate. Thank you. That motion is adopted. Thank you very much. We appreciate, Dan, you and your team being here today. Next item, thank you. Next item on our agenda is discussion and possible action related to the district's policy on tax abatement agreements. Going to turn that over to Ms. Lenora Keys and Mr. Rivera.
Good afternoon, Regents. I'll go ahead and take care of this one, together with Lenora. I'm sorry, Ms. Keys. Next slide, please. It's the cover memo to this, which was in your packet. Next slide. So, to be efficient, Regents, this policy, you'll recall, I know Mr., I know Region Garza's looking at it from his perspective for the first time, but this was provided in draft form to you all at your last board meeting, and hopefully, you've had an opportunity to review it. And so, we'll try to get through this as efficiently as possible. Next slide. Just as background, the college is authorized to participate in tax abatement projects and reinvestment zones. And in the past, the college has a history of actually engaging in this kind of activity and granted abatements. But the past participation has been really on an ad hoc basis, with guidelines adopted for that particular project, and there's been no policy in place. And so, this is an attempt to provide something going forward that the board can use as guidance, and determine whether or not to approve and grant and participate in a tax abatement project. Of course, the board, in its sole discretion, has the authority to determine whether or not participation in such an arrangement is in the public interest, and that the applicant has demonstrated compliance with minimum criteria. Next slide, please. The policy, we hope that by presenting you with a policy that going forward, you will have specific conditions that will provide also some clarity to those wishing to apply to you for a tax abatement, that show exactly what you're looking at and what you're considering. The enumerated list, there's actually a list of some of the subject components that are in the proposed policy. Next slide, please. In summary, the proposed minimum criteria include that the covered area is located within your district, that there's going to be a projected increase to the praise property valuations, that there will be job creation, and that there'll be no adverse impact on any existing facilities. These are the general criteria. Of course, there are others that are included in the policy regarding the scope, term, and amount of the abatement. Next slide, please. The proposed policy outlines the following steps in order to facilitate a more orderly and a transparent process for your consideration of tax abatement agreements. There are details regarding what's required to be in the application contents, that the agreement be executed, the recapture provision, responsibilities of administration, once an application is received, and then an assignment first, for discretion, with a sunset provision as well, that we'll bring this policy up for regular review. Next slide, please. You can see that we've got, it'll fall under your, it'll be a B policy, and it'll be B4.37. And this summarizes the steps that will be followed. There will be receipt of a request to participate in a tax abatement project. Administration will notify you that we received one, and then give you an estimate of when a report can be presented. We, the administration will evaluate the request in accordance with the different criteria in the policy, and will prepare a report, as well as a recommendation to you for consideration. And that will be presented to you for deliberation and action at a public board meeting. Fairly straightforward to say we presented this to you last time, but we are here, Ms. Key, and I, to answer any questions. Next slide.
That was the last slide. The rest of it, it goes specifically in our board packet.
I'm sorry, I was going to say that included in your packet is the chart showing that this has been passed on also to the different councils, as well as the president's executive team for the notification and review. That concludes the report. There you go. That concludes our presentation. And like I say, Ms. Keys and I are here to answer any questions. I should clarify, there is no present, you don't presently have any abatement requests pending.
So, similar to our TERS policy, this is to have a policy in place in advance if that question ever comes up. Ms. Everett, I see your mic is open. You have a question?
Thank you. And I'm sorry if this was addressed at our earlier discussion. I just can't remember. Do we have a rough estimate on how long this process would take once an entity expressed interest?
Right now, the entities work through and would continue to work directly with the Corpus Christi Regional Economic Development Corporation through Mike Culberson. And Mike Culberson, actually, under our direction, provides us with that service. That's part of our agreement with them. And, you know, they're usually, he's usually very fast. So, it could take a month or two months, depending on how quickly he got on our agenda. And he brings those forward and works with us as administration. And then he has been making those presentations. I usually introduce him, and then he makes the presentation, because he's worked directly with the companies.
And, but we don't anticipate that having a policy would slow that process down, and if anything, it might help it along, since we're being pretty transparent about what's expected.
That's right. Yes, ma'am. In fact, most, everything that's in here, Mike has addressed in previous times. This would give him more of a guideline to go by.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's exactly right, Region Everett. Like with the TERS policy, actually being upfront about what we require might actually expedite the process. And one clarification is pointed out by our eagle-eyed, our policy eagle-eyed, Ms. McDonald, there is a discrepancy in the PowerPoint. It said B4.37. You'll see here that the actual policy number will be in the B4.38, together with the TERS policy.
Any other questions or comments? This does require action by the board. Is there a motion to adopt the policy as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Adami.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Hutchison. Any additional questions on the motion or the presentation? I'm gonna do a roll call vote on this one. We'll switch it up on you. I'm gonna do a roll call vote. I'm gonna start from the bottom. Dr. Sherwood.
Yes.
Mr. Salinas.
Yes.
Ms. Hutchison.
Yes.
Mr. Garza.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Ms. Everett.
Yes.
Dr. Adami.
Yes.
Carol Scott, I vote yes as well. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for your work on this, Ms. Keys and Mr. Rivera.
Thank you, Regents.
Thank you very much.
Stay on the line, because you're on the next one as well. The next is a request from the City of Corpus Christi, and from the developer, I guess, Bohemian Colony, to participate in tax increment reinvestment zone number five. Do you have opening comments, Dr. Eskamia?
Just lots of work going into this project, working with the individual developers. There's a different methodology, Regents, that you're gonna see here than what we've been used to. But look forward to presenting this very valuable information against all the work that staff has done. It's been incredible to pivot and adjust, and things are gonna look slightly different. So, bear with us, and I'm sure we'll explain things. Lenora, I think you're gonna kick us off.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. And Regents, thank you all very much. What we're presenting today is the proposed tax increment reinvestment zone number five for Bohemian Colony. Augustine Rivera, General Counsel, was supporting this. And I wanted to give credit and thank you to John Johnson, our Comptroller and Revenue Budget Administrator, and Natalie Villarreal, our Executive Director of Government and Board Relations, were also very helpful. Next slide, please. We will be discussing the proposed TERS 5 as it relates to the Board of Regents' policy that was passed last November 2019, providing information on how it impacts the college. The administration will be recommending that the college participate in TERS 5, asking for approval to enter into an inter-local agreement with the city, and asking that the Board select a representative of the TERS 5 Board. Also, I'd like to introduce Ms. Heather Herbert. She is the Director of Finance and Business Analysis for the City of Corpus Christi. She's been extremely helpful during this process, and is available to answer questions, hopefully, at the end or during your, during the presentation, at your choice. And also, Mr. Roberto Santos-Williams is the developer of the Bohemian Colony, and he is also on to answer questions as we move through this presentation. So, thank you both for waiting and being with us today. This is what we're going to discuss. Okay? Thank you all. Okay. And now then, the next slide. College Board Policy B4.37 was passed last year and relates to Chapter 311 of the Texas Tax Code. The TERS, or Tax Increment Financing Zone, is a certain geographical area, and the TERS proposal has been reviewed by administration in accordance to our B4.37 policy. Next slide, please. The college has participated in all four of the previous TERS that were proposed by the city, beginning in 1983, and most recently with TERS 4, for the North Beach area that was proposed in February of 2020. TERS 1 ended as a TIF in 2004. And as you can see, from TERS 1 to TERS 2 and 3, the more detailed information, and we discussed this pretty much in length, posted in last February. Next slide, please. This is some background on a tax increment zone, in that it has a base-year value based upon the most recent tax year, with participation allowed, allowed up to 100% of taxes collected, and all eligible expenses specified in the project and financing plan that are on a reimbursement basis. I think this is important, again, to reiterate, a reimbursement basis. The concept is that as eligible expenses are used to enhance an area, that tax revenue will be generated from the resulting growth in the zone. Next slide, please. The blue chart, the blue part of this chart represents the base value of the TERS that fundamentally remains constant, with the yellow section showing incremental growth as investment is made with an improvement, and resulting in the gray section with increased tax revenues over a period of time. Currently, the baseline value of the zone, or property, is over $825,000, with a fair market value of over $11 million. However, the majority of the property is under agriculture exemptions, resulting in a much lower assessed value, assessed tax value, and assessed tax of only $20,574 for all taxing entities. And Delmar College taxes for the year 2020 would be at $2,384. Thank you. Next slide, please. This is an overview of TERS number 5, which was created by the city and initiated by the developer. The proposed TERS 5 is for approximately 258 acres, located at South Pottery Island Drive and Crosstown Expressway. As you see, the developer will, the development will be for 999 multifamily units, 777 townhomes, and over 450,000 square feet of commercial development. The proposed timeline is to complete the build-out in 10 to 11 years, with a value of $320 million at the end of 20 years. The request is for reimbursement for the cost of streets, sewer, drainage, water infrastructure, and the development of a 10-acre park. Next slide, please. This is a project aerial view, and the map shows the location of the Bohemian Colony project behind what we not, what we would refer to as the Walmart and AMC Theaters at the intersection of SPID and the Crosstown Expressway. Next slide, please. The TERS 4 Board is established under Texas Tax Code 311.009, and it would have nine members. It defines all the structure and representative, representation on the board. The representation will be from the county, the city, Senator Heno Hosa would make a designation, and the representative from the area, which is, I understand, is Mr. Todd Hunter. The developer of the college will also have representation. And we should decide to participate, so will Delmar College. This list is what was provided to me last week. I do believe that the name or two is different. However, this is a very good representation of the board makeup that was up last week.
Can I ask a question right here?
I'm sorry.
This, the makeup of this board is different than they typically are. Could you describe why?
Yes, ma'am. This is as established under Tax Code 311, because it is recommended by the developer, and under the administration of the city, that there is special tax code around the makeup of this member board. And so, this would be complying with that code.
Thank you.
I think this is the one area that's the most unique, as Dr. Eskamia was referring to, is the board makeup itself. Next slide, please. This is the project master plan. The development project will be completed in phases, and this represents the various phases. As you can see, Phase 1 there in the middle, as it goes on out to the different phases. And the timeline is coming up in another slide. Next slide, please. This is looking at the TERS 5 parameters. And the, and under the, the proposal comes to the college from the city, which has approved the TERS and will serve as the administrator. Nuasis County has also approved the TERS. Both the city and the county have approved their contributions to be at 75%, with a total reimbursement not to exceed $17 million over 20 years. The city's contribution will not exceed the lesser of $9 million or the amount collected in 20 years. The developer has petitioned for reimbursement of the infrastructure cost with revenue generated by the growth and taxable value. The value is projected to be at $320 million over the 20-year term. And you can see in the different areas here where this is all identified. Next slide, please. As we look at some of the details of the TERS, it is important to note that the majority of the 250 acres has an agricultural tax exemption, and is valued at $825,000, approximately. The exemption will be removed in phases, and with an estimated $189,000 in tax revenue generated by the three-year look-back, will not be captured by the TERS. In this plan, the taxing entities will collect 25% of the tax revenues overall, plus the captured amount from the look-back on the, removing the agricultural exemption. And at this point, I'd like to call out and thank Heather for, with the City of Corpus Christi, for all the support in providing the previous slides. Heather Holbert is the Director of Finance and Business Analysis, helped with providing these slides, and were basically what she used with the city, and I was able to adapt them to Delmar College. Next slide, please. One of the things that is unique to our policy is that we do look for TERS to provide us with the information that relates directly to the college. And it does, with this construction, would create jobs projected for certain programs within construction, management, supervision, accounting, and real estate sale, and presumably, other types of programs, too. I think it's easy to see where our direct construction, architecture, those types of programs could benefit and tied to this for our students. programs could benefit and tied to this for our students. Next slide, please. This timeline is for the various phases of construction, as, as in the plan, and presented by the developer, and as you can see, as you go down through Month 1 all the way through 72, how they propose that the different phases would come through, and this is the same layout map that we saw on the previous slide. And there's also $3 million that's being dedicated to build a community park that's shown there in the middle of the green area within this map. And this goes to the over $11 million direct investment by the projector, 11, by the contractor at that point. Next slide, please. The TERS 5 build-out is projected over a 20-year period, with multifamily housing, townhomes, and retail spaces. Construction costs are listed, as you see down each column, and the total taxable value is in the far-right column, shows the projected value of over $320 million at the end of 20 years for the entire complex. Next slide, please. This, this slide is directly related to Delmar College. The table is showing the overall 20-year TERS as approved by the City of Corpus Christi. However, I would like to draw your attention to the Delmar College columns that are in light blue, and the yellow highlighted points for consideration. At the far-left header, for the base year, you will see that the present amount of taxes paid to Delmar is approximately $2,384. There in the upper-left corner, you can see under the Delmar blue line. Following across the upper rows to 75% to TERS, under the blue column for Delmar, the yellow highlighted areas show the amounts that would go to the TERS as reimbursement for the cost of infrastructure for the project. The column to the far-right, labeled 25% to entity, shows the blue column for Delmar College, and the amount of revenue that would be generated to the college for each year. The total at the end of 10 years is approximately $697,000, in yellow, and at the end of 14 years is approximately $1.5 million, and in yellow. This is in alignment with the city's commitment to the TERS to pay only the lesser of $9 million or 20 years, which should be reached at the year 14. You can see by the city column, where, I didn't put that in yellow, but it, they total out at $9 million at the end of 20 years. So, this is the table that really directs the dollars for Delmar College at our present Next slide, please. So, in summary, if the college participates for 14 years, at the end of 14 years, the college will have contributed at 75%, approximately $4 million. It will have received, and during our 25%, we would have received $1.465 million, which would be compared to the $33,000, which would be totaled up over the same 14-year period if there is no investment made. And the increased tax valuation at the end of 14 years is approximately $277 million. Next slide, please. Based on this financial analysis and the recommendation of the city and our developer here, this, the college administration recommends that we participate for 14 years at 75%, up to, I should say, up to 14 years at 75%, and up to a maximum contribution of $4 million. Next slide, please. And at this time, would like to answer any questions or have any questions as we make these final recommendations and proposed action, is that we do participate in TERS 5, that we ask for the rate of incentive participation to be defined at 75%, and that the Delmar College would participate for up to 14 years, that you should name a, a member of the TERS Board to serve, and approve or authorize the administration to enter into an appropriate interlocal agreement with the City of Corpus Christi. And as I said before, Representative Heather, I'm sorry, Heather, I messed up the last name. Heather's here with us from the City of Corpus Christi. Heather Herbert, and.
Holbert, yes.
Herbert, thank you, Heather. Mr. Roberto Santos-Williams, the developer, is also here to answer any questions, and myself and Augie Rivera, that you may have.
Just a, just a quick comment, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
So, you saw the number. Again, Regents, there's, again, more uniqueness to this one, as was presented and described very eloquently, I might add, Ms. Keys, very nice job. The 14 number, there's a reason why 14, why not 10, and so forth. There, there are reasons for that, and I think you've touched on them and described how the doing 10, and, and the differences there. Lenora, would you touch on that one more time, please?
Yes, sir, if you don't mind. Let's go back three slides to this financial one, if you don't mind.
This is really important, Regents, again, speaking to the uniqueness of, of this.
Yes, where we have the yellow. Because of the agricultural exemption, and because of the, the phasing end of their construction dollars, at the end of 10 years, we're, we're just, have not contributed as, as much, and also, you get the impact, most of the impact come in years 11 through 14, and going along with the city, and the timelines that are projected there, this really worked out to go the full 14 years. What we've done in the previous TERS is we've gone 20 years, or 10 and 10, and then we've gone a variety of ways, when we go back and do an analysis of the previous commitments that the college has made, and we felt like it would be more productive and beneficial to all concerned, and really, within the payback for the college, to go ahead and do the 14-year commitment.
Ms. Keys, if I can interrupt, Roberto Santos-Williams here.
Yes, sir.
First of all, Madam Chair, and Regents, thank you for taking the time to hear me, and Ms. Keys, and Mr. Rivera, and Heather, thank you very much for all your efforts on this. I'd just quickly like to say about this 14-year estimate, your, the Delmar and the county are capped at $4 million each anyway, because we have a $17 million dollar cap, so 14 years at $4 million is the same as 18 years at $4 million, 20 years at $4 million. But when the majority of the work is completed in, in 10, 8 to 10 to 12 years, it does, it does, it does tighten up our ability to get repaid quite a bit if we get those last six years on the back end taken off. I just want to say that the, that the college is capped at, at approximately $4 million anyway, whether it's, whether it's 14 or 20 years, and I would much prefer the full 20-year TERS that the county and, that was established. Ms. Keys, go ahead, I just wanted.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Appreciate your, your input, and appreciate you waiting this long to, to talk, so thank you. I know you've been on all afternoon with us, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much for your, your work on this, and, and thank you, Mr. Williams, for being here, and, and Ms. Hope, Holbert from the city, thank you. Are there questions or comments from the board on this proposed TERS agreement? Mr. Garza, I see your mic open.
Yes, Madam Chair. If I could, I want to recuse myself from discussion or vote on this particular item. Since I've participated on another taxing entity's side, it would, it would, I wouldn't want it to appear that I'm following the project along and, and voting for or against the project, so I'm going to recuse myself from discussion or vote on this particular item, please.
Thank you very much, sir, I appreciate that. We'll make note of that at the, at the time of the vote.
Fully noted, thank you.
Other questions or comments? I think our policy that we adopted has served us well, because I think we get all of our questions answered at the, at the onset of, of these kinds of, or at least, at least the, the developer of the city knows what our questions are going to be and are prepared to answer them in the presentation, so I think that policy has served us well. I would ask that, at a future point in time, we update this specific slide showing the 14 years and the $4 million cap, because this shows something different than that. So, I think if we could update that slide for a future presentation, that would be Mr. Rivera, if we are not prepared to actually appoint a representative, assuming that there is a motion and that it passes, if we're not prepared to appoint a representative today, is that a problem? Could we hold that for the November board meeting?
I think they have a meeting coming up.
They do.
Is that correct? Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, we have a, we, go ahead.
I was just going to suggest, are we able to make the motion to accept participation and authorize the chair to appoint someone, or do we have to vote on that appointment?
You can delegate that to the chair.
Okay.
That would be my motion, if that's agreeable.
Are you prepared, are you prepared to make a full motion?
I am. I'm prepared to accept the proposed participation in TERS Number 5, and to authorize the chair to appoint our designated representative to the TERS.
And I'm going to ask for a friendly amendment, that we clarify that this is a participation for 14 years at 75%, with a maximum contribution of $4 million.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second to that motion by Ms. Hutchinson?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Before we, second it again, Ms. Roberto Santos-Williams here. Madam Chair, could I, could I ask when we, when, when this was moved to a 14-year, I understand we presented it earlier, it, it's the full runway that we need to, to this project is able to finance and to make sure that, that, that the TERS is able to be successful and to assist us in this project, and I'm just curious what, what the need is to bring it down from 20 to 14, if you don't mind.
Okay, I am, you're, you're cracking up a little bit, you're breaking up a little bit in your presentation, so I'm going to ask Ms. Keys and Ms. Holbert to clarify, if you can, for me, what, what you want in the motion.
Sure, I think what, what I understood, Ms. Santos to say is that he was actually asking, I know that the board is considering a 14-year time period, and I think what he was requesting is that you consider taking it to the 20-year time period, or at least anything to 15-year, with still maintaining that $4 million cap, and that does allow for, if there is any delays in development, to be able to build that, to build that value to make sure that the $4 million is, to make sure that he, that the developer does get reimbursed for the full amount of the investment.
Okay, is that correct, Mr. Williams?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am, we'd like the full, the full 20-year runway that the city and county have coined, and I would, I'd really appreciate.
Thank you. Ms. Keys, Mr. Rivera, does that change our staff recommendation, or are we comfortable with, with that request?
It changes our recommendation, but it keeps it within the same dollar value. So, it spreads the $4 million out over 20 years instead of 14, as long as you keep the, the maximum at $4 million, which is a total $17 million TERS anyway, so it just spreads out. It gives them more of an opportunity to reach the $4 million, and it extends the 20, extends it to 20 years.
So, I guess the correct way to have asked my question, does that, are you comfortable with us changing that from 14 to 20 years, and what I hear you saying is, yes, you are?
Yes, ma'am, we are. I would be, I mean.
Dr. Eskini, any concerns?
It gives them a greater potential. By holding them to the 14 years, it makes their construction timeline tighter. I think that's what Mr. Williams is saying, in that, in this date and time. However, if we go for the full 20 years, then there's a greater opportunity for any delays in construction, and also the opportunity for the values to increase.
Okay. Gotcha.
So, as administration, we can do, at the weather, the pleasure of the board, however, our recommendation could be for 20 years, the $4 million would be the cap.
Okay.
In any manner.
So, Ms. Hutchinson, given that, that request, we don't have a second yet, so you can still alter your motion, if you are so inclined, would be that the college participate for 20 years at 75%, with a maximum contribution of $4 million, and a board representative to be appointed by the chair at a later date? And include?
Yes, and I was having, I had some difficulty hearing some of the speakers, so if I'm asking you to repeat something, let me, I apologize, but, Ms. Keys, you're saying, you said it could be your recommendation, are you saying that is now the staff recommendation?
Yes, ma'am, we could recommend it 20 years. 20 years makes it a less risk for the developer that we would reach the $4 million contribution.
I understand that, and it's, it's a benefit to the developer, are there, do you see downsides that would mitigate that advantage?
No, it makes it more of a sure, I think it reduces the total risk that the development be successful. We want the development to be successful, we want to contribute, and the $4 million is our cap, so the 20 years is acceptable.
Okay, with, with that cap involved, I would, I would make that modification to my, my motion.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hutchinson. Is there a second to that motion?
Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Adami. I see, Dr. Sherwood has her mic open for a question. Do you have a question or comment, ma'am?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm, so the, the city, county are in at 20 years, and I think, I thought I saw that in the presentation, is that correct?
That's correct, and I'd like to clarify my wording, then, if y'all, for the 20 years, I would like to say that our wording would be exactly as the same as the city, that it would be the lesser of 20 years or $4 million, whichever is reached first. So that when we do the interlocal agreement, Mr. Rivera and the city attorney would be basically working on the same type of agreement, it's the lesser of, as soon as we reach the $4 million, if we reach $4 million for 20 years, then the TERS, then we've completed our portion of the TERS.
That's what I intended in my motion by the cap, so, yes.
Yes, just to kind of clarify. Thank you.
Understood.
Okay.
And I was going to say, to further clarify, too, the TERS is capped at 17 million total, and so the TERS can't collect over, so it, the TERS ends whenever 17 million or 20 years, the lesser of, so I think everyone's agreements are based off of the lesser of either the dollar amount or the time period.
Thank you for that clarification. Do we have sufficient language for the motion, Mr. Rivera, your, okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the Board of Regents on this presentation and Okay, are we ready for a vote? Going to do another roll call vote, please. Dr. Adami.
Yes.
Ms. Everett.
Yes.
Mr. Bennett.
Yes.
Oh, Mr. Garza is abstaining. Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes.
Mr. Salinas? You had your mic off.
It won't come on, so, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Sherwood?
Yes.
And Carol Scott, I vote yes as well. So, thank you. This is in District 3. Congratulations, Mr. Williams, we hope that you are indeed very successful with your development, and we look forward to, to visiting the park, and visiting the retail centers, and encouraging friends and family to move into the, the residential area as well, so, so good luck on that.
Really appreciate that, thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Regents, and we won't let you down.
This is in District 3, if I'm correct, and so, I'm going to check with Regent Estrada to see if she might be willing to, to serve, but in the meantime, I'll, I'll figure out who the appropriate representative can be. I do have a question for you, Mr. Rivera, can a board member serve on more than one TERS, representing Delmar, if we so choose, or if there's a temporary issue?
I don't see why, there's some conflict is between the TERS maybe, but I don't, I do not think so.
Okay.
But I will double check.
Well, I'll work on that and work on getting that done before you're done, line for the next meeting. Again, thank you, thank you, Ms. Herbert, for being, participating today, and Mr. Williams, we thank you very much for, for the proposal.
Madam Chair, I'm not sure if you heard me prior, but thank you very much, and Regents as well, and Ms. Keys, and Heather, thank you for the work, we will not let you down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you both for staying with us and all your help. Thank you, Heather.
Thank you. Thanks, you're welcome.
Bye-bye.
Okay, so the last regular agenda item for today's meeting is discussion and possible action related to approval of a construction, construction contract for the Workforce Development Center upgrades to support our pilot plant project. I'm going to ask Dr. Eskemia to tee that up, please.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Strabos is joining us this afternoon to, to put and to bring the, I guess, the final touches on, on connecting these, the additional pilot, pilot plant projects that we have on West Campus. It's a, it's a tremendous investment that's got highly technical changes to connect up to the control rooms and, and the classrooms at the Workforce Development Center on West Campus. Mr. Strabos is here to explain in detail with his presentation. John?
For Regents, President, thank you. Next slide, please. Here's the background of the Workforce Development Center. The final construction project cost was $20,551,000. This was paid for with 2014 bond project, bond rep, bond funds. Start date was March 17th of 2017, it was finished in December 20th, 2019, approximately 45,425 square feet. Next slide, please. Here's an example, here's a photo of the completed building. Next slide, please. And again, next slide. And so you have some examples, some different classrooms, this is a computer classroom, next slide. And again, this is a regular classroom, but it's a large classroom, you have folding partitions within it, next slide, please. You have labs within the space, these are specialized labs, next slide, please. This is part of the welding shop, then they are using the welding lab today, they've been using it all semester, next slide, please. This is part of the backside of the building, next slide, please. And these are your pilot plant that are coming in, this is the New Star, and so this project is to help support a significant investment from our industry partners, you've had donations from ExxonMobil, from New Star, a whole variety of different donations, several million dollars worth of equipment coming in to make a state-of-the-art pilot plant and training programs. Next slide, please. These are parts coming from, well, all over the world, we've got parts coming from Louisiana, part coming from Illinois, parts that come from France. Next slide, please. So our next steps then, to approve this pilot plant project, and this is to support academic programs, the construction cost, $499,367. You have a detailed cost proposal from Spawd Last, you have a description of the work, using the construction documents that have been repaired by Turner's Merries Architects, we're asking for additional $50,000 to be set aside as contingency, and the funding source is $549,367, including the contingency. It's from 2014 bond interest income that has not been allocated, and you saw the investment report earlier tonight, to date, the bond, 2014 bonds have earned $3,929,021 in interest income, and none of which has been allocated to any specific projects. Next slide, please. Questions? And so in part of your package, you should have the proposal from Spawd Last, as well as the detailed report from the architects describing the work, we've worked directly with the faculty and staff about the needs to make these pilot plant operational and other academic requirements that they have.
Thank you very much.
Was this set out for bidding? We used what's called the buy board, it's a cooperative contract, and part of this is the timing of this, so we've worked with purchasing, and it's through what's called the buy board, and the buy board has bid it, so it is competitively bid through the buy board. Do you happen to know how many people bid on it? Well, in this particular case, I went directly through this co-op program, because they all use the same price book, and so we could go to different contractors and get different bids, but for the same scope of work, the price would be the same, and part of it is the timeness of essence in this particular case. But it has been competitively bid through the cooperative purchase buy board. Okay, thank you. Yes, sir.
Ms. Keys, could you, I know you're still on the call, could you remind us of the value of the donations related to the pilot plant expansion?
Yes, I'm very glad to answer that. The City of Corpus Christi awarded through Type A funds $2.39 million, and that plus Cheniere Energy gave us $463,000, so 2.39 million, 463,000, plus another 50,000 from Cheniere, and then the New Star plant is valued at $1 million, and that is the, what's going on in the pilot plants outside. Those are the external pilot plants, including an ethylene cracker simulator, which is the biggest piece you're seeing installed there, and the piece coming from Cheniere Energy is a liquid natural gas simulator, and then what came from New Star is really what I call, if you think of a, of a pipeline simulator, really, it will even have a pig, and, and so our cost was only the movement and installation and the structure around it. And then inside the building, Gulf Coast Growth Ventures donated another $1.5 million for the equipment that's coming from France, and that's going inside the building. All these donations came in either after or right about the time that the building was to be, was already drawn and being built, and as each one of these pieces of equipment, to give you an example, are individually designed and fabricated to be simulators, and to simulate without using a natural gas product that it's explosive, you have to go to specialized engineering companies, and that's what we were able to do, but within each one of them, they're customized, and so due to that customization, when you start to install them, there are special pieces of equipment, special cooling, or fittings that have to come into place, that you don't know about really until the equipment arrives, or until you get the final, very final, final, final drawings, that have taken the last year and a half to two years to do. So this is a huge investment, one to, you know, six, five to six million dollars from business and industry in our community, and so Delmar College is going to be contributing some out of bond money in support of what's already been invested.
Yep. Lenora, the other thing is the million-dollar software that was also donated.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I forgot, thank you. The OSI software is valued at $1 million, and it's a piece of analytical software that analyzes the flow of anything that goes in over 65 percent of the refineries worldwide, and so our students will leave our control room, being able to operate this equipment equivalent to most, to any chemical plant or refinery within the world. So the types of donations that have come in, and the uniqueness of it, is really what's required to make this all work and come together, and when you think about it, a lot of this was, a lot of the donations came out of requests that we put together in 2016 and 17, and then the equipment had to be fabricated, and then shipped and installed, and so that's where you're seeing us come to ask for the college to contribute this money to, really, it's the installation piece on things, on the different pieces of specialized equipment.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Mr. Bennett?
Did we already have one change order related to this?
I believe this is the same money that he's asking now to be paid out. You've already been asked once to approve it? John, I believe that they were asked to approve this a while back, and now then this is actually approval for the funding of it, the payment of it.
That, that is correct, there were previous projects that had been previously been funded and authorized, and this is to complete that project.
Thank you.
I tell you, we will have a world-class, state-of-the-art, from what industry's telling me and college partners, there's nobody else in the country that will have what we will have here when this is completed, and it's, and as you see, all this support from business industry and the City of Corpus Christi tax dollars to pay for the equipment. If you add in the other 1.4 million, which is the first ethylene cracker, this is going to be quite impressive.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments from Regents? We do need a motion to adopt this action to approve the upgrades to support the pilot plant. Dr. Sherwood?
Oh. I'm in.
Thank you, Dr. Adami, seconds, we were jumping at the same time. Any questions, last call for questions? All those in favor, raise your hand. Any opposed, say no, or raise your hand. Thank you, that motion passes unanimously, thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go back in and finish our closed session items from this morning, so bear with me just a few minutes. We're going to closed session under Texas Government Code 551.071 regarding the pending or contemplated litigation, legal claims or settlement offer with possible discussion and action in open session, and the seeking of legal advice from counsel on pending or contemplated legal matters or claims with possible discussion and action in open session, and under Texas Government Code 551.087 regarding discussion of deliberation of information received from a business prospect with which the county is conducting economic development negotiations, or the deliberations of an offer of a financial or other incentive to a business prospect with possible discussion and action in open session, and under Texas Government Code 551.072 regarding the deliberation of a purchase exchange lease or value of real property with possible discussion and action in open session. The time is 4:03, we'll take just about a five-minute break if we can to clear the Thank you all, we have come back from closed session at 5:15 PM, there's no action coming out of closed session. Calendar items, Dr. Eskemia?
I can tell you today's October 13.
That's the only date I have on my watch right now, I apologize.
That's quite all right. Our next regular board meeting is scheduled for November 10th, there is a date of November 13th, I think is correct, for the canvassing of votes, and Ms. Pettis or Mr. Rivera will be in touch with a couple of Regents who are not on the ballot to come in and do the canvassing of that election. And then our December board meeting is scheduled for December 8th. With there being no other action, I want to adjourn the meeting at 5:16 PM. Thank you all, Regents, and welcome again. Mr. Garza?
Thank you, Regents.
Thank you.